Osborne ready, Mayor.
You are. I appreciate that. All right, we're gonna get started. I call the meeting to order on October 21st, City Council Agenda Meeting Work Session. Suzanne, can you call order, please? City Clerk. Roll call. It's not. I'm here.
Suzanne.
She's there. I don't think she can hear us.
Suzanne, you're on mute.
No, she's not. We are.
We have signage for that.
Can we hold it up?
Jason, you're bad.
It's not too late.
Hurry home.
Suze?
Can you guys hear me?
We can hear you.
I can't hear any of you, but I will take roll and let's do that. Mayor Carr?
I'm here.
Mayor Protem Labar?
Here.
Councilmember Neil?
Here.
Councilmember Case?
Here.
Councilmember Path? Is Councilmember Path absent?
Yes.
So far.
And Councilmember Zuluaga?
Yes.
Thank you. Even though you can't hear me. If everybody would stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please. All right, we have a single item on our agenda tonight. We're gonna discuss, we're gonna weed through the first pass on our 2021 budget. I want to remind everybody on council that this is a dynamic situation. Numbers will change a little bit here and there, and it's an aspirational budget, so. This is our first pass through examining it, and. I will, we had a very nice executive summary, the last meeting from City Manager. And we'll start there, but we, what I'd like to do is for the executive session, if, if the City Manager wants to give any additional words, and then we'll talk about it as a grouping. And if there's any specific changes, we'll, we'll entertain those. Darren, City Manager.
Mayor, we've gotten several comments from, from several of the City Council members since publishing the, the budget last week. We will incorporate those. I think there's some comments about, including the Burt comments in, in the. In the narrative of the, of the budget message. There's a couple other notes that we can, we can add as well, but I'm ready to bring the budget up and we can begin going page by page if that's, if that's how you want to start.
Let me poll the council and see if they have any. Interest in going through the first pages, which is the budget message.
Yeah, I got lots of notes.
Oh, okay.
But maybe they'll get covered along the way, so.
Well, we have a, Councilmember Zuluaga has some comments with the budget message portion, so I will let him proceed. Which page? Robert?
Yes, I know. I'm just looking at my copious highlights here and seeing what. So really, this is the City Manager's summary of what's contained in it, and I just made some notes as I was going through. I don't know whether we want to go through them in detail in his brief or whether we want to go through them in the.
Well, so I'm talking about just the budget message portion. If you see some problems with paragraphs, if they're gonna be covered later on in the budget, then I would, I would say that we'd cover them there. But if you have textual contents of the budget message you'd like to discuss, this would be the time to do that.
Well, I know that it's, the City Manager's comments are here, but one thing I wanted to perhaps suggest. On page two, although contrary to paying down city's debt, the City Council is expected to initiate an ordinance to incrementally reduce the city business license fee. I would just suggest that perhaps the intention of what that is, is although contrary to paying down the city's debt, but consistent with encouraging a vital business client, climate. The City Council is expected to initiate an ordinance. Just suggest, I'm not. Holding faster, but just to give a sense of why council's looking at that, so.
My suggestion is that you send that textual change to the City Manager and have them look at it, see if it works with that, and, and update the next version.
Okay.
As a suggestion.
And I've got another one like that, so that's fine.
Go ahead.
But otherwise, no, that's what, the other one that I have?
Yeah.
Thank you.
At the end of the third paragraph on the same page. Talking about these costs would solely be borne by the city. We're talking about the, the reliever route and costs that we need to prepare for. With long-term fiscal responsibilities and concerns looming, it is recommended the city reserve resources. Not be further reduced until the significant concerns can be discussed and addressed with our community members and business owners. Otherwise, these costs would primarily have to be paid for with debt. Well, I would say that that conclusion isn't the conclusion that I would draw. I would suggest maybe it's the cost paid for stimulating business and removing over regulations. So perhaps that can be included in that paragraph.
I, I mean, I'll be honest with you, Councilmember Zuluaga, I, I believe that's the only, I, my analysis of it, I'm not sure how else it would be paid for otherwise. So, you know, those are my comments to City Council, so you understand my position in presenting the budget and my concerns with that infrastructure and the future cost implications of that. If we don't start saving for it or don't find a revenue stream to pay for it, we certainly will have to pay for it with debt if we end up having to do it. Otherwise, it won't happen. So there's, there's only really two options. So I'm not sure what other options you, you see other than that.
Well, the, all right, that's fine. That's your opinion, and I'm fine.
I'd be, now, I would say I would love to hear, I mean, if there's another idea, I'd love to hear it. We can certainly try to find grants. There's the potential for some grants. But really, most of the transportation costs, these would be the ones borne by us when this devolved to the city. I'm just looking at traditionally when, when business, when. A route like this is devolved to the city, it becomes the cost of the city to. Build it and put it in, in, you know, on-street parking and all the things that we've talked about, it becomes the city's responsibility and no longer CDOT's responsibility. So, those are things that I, I really just want council, the real intent of this is council just to understand there are future obligations, significant costs. Associated with the reliever route that City Council should consider in the future, and so that's, that's really the rationale behind including this because it's a, it's a big, it's a big financial obligation looming for the city. If, if City Council intends to move forward with affecting this issue.
Exactly, and that's, and that's precisely why we are keen to pay off the, the debt burden that we have, focus on exactly these types of things. So that's great.
So, so your thought is possibly that paying down the debt and then opening up at that revenue stream could help fund some of this? Is that kind of your thought process? I, I would agree with that. That's, that's another, another option as well.
Kelly, you had some words.
I've lost track. Thank you.
Okay.
I tried several times, but.
So I, I would suggest having an offline conversation about that with the City Manager.
Just some, some insight, if I could. Been through a lot of these different projects over the 24 years here with the city, and including the, the entire. Reconstruction and improvements along the corridor and Highway 24. And, and with that, we were able to use the city's revenue streams that were healthy, and I hope we keep them healthy. As leverage for grant funds that came from the federal programs through CDOT as a path-through, pass-through organization. In order to be able to secure such funding, the city has to be poised with those monies to leverage. And so I caution that. This is a project that of, of the size that is something we haven't seen. And I would hope that we would continue to save and, and. Have those monies available to leverage those federal funds because our budget won't ever pay for a project of this nature. So just a little insight from years of working through those transportation projects. On this state highway that comes through our town, and remember that it is not our highway, it is the state's highway. And working with them will get us much further than working against them. Thank you. That's, that's kind of what I wanted to say. I had other things, but that's what I remembered.
Sounds good.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Mayor, same paragraph?
Rusty, yes.
Darren, when I read that paragraph, the, the thing that struck, struck me was. You have laid out almost like we have a requirements document that says that we, we would likely remove the existing medians. Four lanes to two lanes, add on-street parking. None of those things have just been discussed by this City Council, perhaps other City Councils have. But if, if we just ignore requirements, we don't know what the requirements are. What would the range of the project to take over the Highway 24 bypass? I guess this would be considered the by, no, this would be the business route. Business route. Is it going to be 10 million or is there a range? So that we know what the range might be, you know, from 2 million or 3 million to 10 million, or is, I mean, where did we come up with the $10 million?
So, so a good question. I will tell you, based, this is based on kind of traditionally and what some of the, some of the previous feedback from the community is in terms of turning, returning the downtown to a walkable. Community, and so when you do that, you typically will put on-street parking on that street that would eliminate one of the lanes. You would typically remove the median because the median's there for the more higher, higher speed traffic and traffic control. So there's some changes that would need to be made. I will tell you, and I, I know we got Kip here who can talk about costs and Robin to talk about cost of, of these types of changes. But in, in generally, you have about 3.3 miles from Walmart out to, to Country Lodge, and so there's, that you have that range, and it's about a million or so. To, to do a full-depth reclamation of, of roads like that, so that's generally just in that in itself, but you're also gonna be doing new curb and gutter. You're gonna be expanding the size of the sidewalk so people can walk, and so there's a lot of different things. So we just, we did a guesstimate in general. Of course, you'd go, you'd have to come and get through a full design and, but it's not, it wouldn't be out of the realm of possibility, especially in the years coming, to see it range in the $10 million range. So I think it's realistic. It's something to shoot forward to, to ensure that we can cover that if we need to. Because I think the intent is to return the, our downtown to our, to our local businesses, so our, our community and residents and, and our visitors feel comfortable downtown.
And that's a good explanation. I appreciate that. If that's a realistic number, then, then I'm okay with leaving it in there, but can we add, what I'm trying to do is soften it. Maybe we could add some language that says that could be. Spread over a one to three-year period so that you don't have a, a $10 million lump sum hitting us. That's what I was worried about.
Well, that's a good point. You know, we, this is a philosophical discussion. Do you, as they're building the, because you devolve, you, you want, you're gonna want your business down, your downtown to be, you know, you'd be thinking about these projects simultaneously as the reliever routes being built. You're gonna want to have design already complete on how you want to do this. You're gonna want it done rather quickly because it's gonna change the whole dynamic of, of your downtown once the reliever route goes live. So I, I think there is some, you're right, there may be one or two-year split, but you wouldn't want to spread it over too many years. But yeah, that's a good point.
Thank you. If you could consider that in your rewording, and then I think it's back to Robert to finish going through his, and then I've got some others later on.
So I appreciate that, and I, I would suggest that any council who has suggestions like that, pass them off to City Manager for consideration. And, and I think within certain restrictions, he can blend in some of these feelings. Thank you. Anything else?
Robert was going. No, my, my other ones are notes that I've made about certain numbers and, and wanting to see them in the details, so we can work through the budget.
Okay, in that case, Mayor, I do have a couple questions. On page six, the Roman, the Roman numeral six, up at the very top, where it's talking about the comprehensive plan. The requirements to gain the grant from DOLA. It says we have to include a three-mile plan hazard and resiliency component, land use code review and intergovernmental agreement with neighboring jurisdictions. The contract language that we have in existence with Logan Simpson, are those items specified in the contract?
Sally?
This is Sally. Yes, they are.
Thank you. And I think I have one more question.
You're up.
The, this would be on page Roman numeral nine. This is in the Water Utility Enterprise Fund, the last sentence, where it says, we anticipate council coming into agreement with the Boy Scouts in 2021 for the land and starting the design work. So I, I'm reading that we are negotiating with them to purchase some of their land.
Kip can answer that. That is the discussion, completely up to council at that time if it is for the land or not.
So if I could chime in on that, the legal issues with that, so. Briefly, the land was donated to the Boy Scouts when an individual passed away and bequeathed it to them, and it has certain restrictions on it. The way it currently stands is we could move forward with a long-term leasehold interest and not necessarily own the property. There's some limitations and considerations in that regard, and so what I've been trying to do for several months now, I actually sent an email this morning to the Forest Service, is to see if we can negotiate a. A trade around the properties to, to have land ownership rights as opposed to just a leasehold interest into, into perpetuity. Because once you build the reservoir, we don't really want to give up our lease. And some of the considerations the Boy Scouts were hoping for in that transaction was so that they could fish and utilize the lake for Boy scouting activities. But the way that their property ownership interest is, is they're not allowed to hunt or fish on the property. So it kind of defeats the purpose for them. So we're trying to finagle a, a way that we can make everybody's interests aligned in the best way possible.
And that's sufficient for an explanation. I was just trying to understand what was going on because I was not knowledgeable. Thank you.
So I just want to make sure we don't get into negotiation discussions here.
Yeah, so this is all very preliminary at this point. We're still working at the, the concept to see if that's something that the Forest Service would even consider. They're, they're the linchpin.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further, Council? Me neither. I've highlighted a bunch of stuff, but it's just so I can remember. Part of the interesting parts for me are on 11 XI, the reallocation of positions. The budget calendar needs a little bit of tweaking next version, Emily, if you could update the budget calendar to what we've actually done. I'd appreciate that. No big deal at this point. And here we go. This is the fun part. I think our pictures look fine, our chart looks fine.
I sent a new one. It hasn't shown up yet.
Oh. Okay, well, we object to the picture for Councilmember Case.
Hey, I just want to let you know, we do intend to replace all the pictures before the budget, once, once we get the new elected official on board. So we'll be taking photos, so those will all be updated in the new, but in the final version.
I want to keep mine, so.
You want to keep the younger-looking version?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
I'll have to go back about 50 years, though. Thank your pardon. All right, so council, typically what we do at this point is we go page by page by page. And so I will start with page one. Anybody on council have anything on page one? Page two. Oh, you're on page one. Okay, sorry.
So I took the, these numbers and contrasted them to 2020. I'm down on 2021 annual budget. I noticed that under expenditures on 2021, salaries and benefits are increased by $93,470. Operations and maintenance are decreased by $182,581. Capital projects outlay are increased by $56,936. Debt services increased by $150, and transfer out is decreased by $120,876. So what I saw in this, and maybe we're gonna get into it in more detail later, but there's an increase in. Expenditures of 303,000, I'm sorry, increase in savings of 303,467. In a increase in expenses of 150,000, 150,556. So I, in layout, I guess, just a, a comment, it seems to be helpful as you put the, the 2020 and 2021 annual budget together to put those historical numbers in it, make it a little quicker. I went back to the previous budget. Yeah, so. Are we gonna see those reflected? I'm guessing, see those reflected?
Excuse me, the, you, if you go to, well, when we go to page three and four.
Yeah.
You will see those summaries. And then, actually, it compares 2018 actuals, 2019 actuals, and then what the 2020 adopted budget. Was, and then the 2020 year-end projection, so that comparison is in those pages. This is the fund balance summary page, page one and two. So this is really the purpose of these two pages is to actually show where we are with our fund balance. Based on their 2020, 2019, starting with 2019 audited numbers, because those are the most recent numbers that we have that are audited. And then you go through, you know, and you see the 2020 projected revenue, projected expenditures. Our fund balance designations for 2020, and then that's when you drop down into the 2021 budget. And you see that breakdown there that you just mentioned, and then the fund balance designations on page two. And the council goal is always the 17% fund balance. Unrestricted, unassigned fund balance, and how that breaks down. And then ends with what our projected end-of-year and 21 expected fund balance will be.
So I would suggest.
And that percentage as well.
I would suggest that the 17% was our 2020 budget goal. I, I would either put a note down there to that effect or something to clear that up, but this, remember, we're in the general fund now. We're just looking at the general fund, so.
And really, this document rolls up from the back to the front of each fund. So the, the line item by line item detail by department rolls up to these two summary pages on three and four. And then that rolls up into the fund balance reconciliation, which is the pages one and two. So all the things you're looking for are here, and it really becomes, it just kind of rolls up into the front of each fund, so that might help as far as navigation.
Yeah, Robert, I was trying to figure out if there was something subtle, because the next page seemed to have the information you were asking for. But I want to make sure, is there something else that you were specifically, like an actual column that says, here's the delta from, you know, an actual column that said. I went through the actual math. Let me finish with Robert. I actually went through on a lot of them and just did on my calculator to see what the difference was.
Right, right, right.
But is that what you were actually asking for?
Just trying, we're, what I'm trying to look at here is, we take what happened this year, we, we take where the plus and minuses are. Where the savings are, where we, where we're, where the greater expenses are, and I'm just looking at the overview and saying, okay, what do those gross numbers look like? And then you, you rolls into the second page. We haven't got there yet, but there's, there, more of that question comes out there.
So if.
He says, maybe I'm gonna see it rolled out, as you say.
Emily, go ahead.
Right, and in the budget message itself, it goes through, it's, you know, it's all text. Most part, page four.
I'm sorry, we, we're losing you. You're sounding like a cartoon character.
picking up a little bit.
Yeah.
I'm gonna see if, if I take my phone off. Let me change the settings.
If, I can hear you now. I just want to talk, try the video.
Okay, so. You can still hear me?
Yes, you're doing fine now.
Hear you now.
Okay, so I just wanted to point out on pay, in the budget message is where a lot of that comparison is. It's a lot of text, but then if you go to page four, Roman numeral four and five. In the budget message, you'll see those breakdowns with the actual dollar change and then percentage change.
I have it up right now on the screen. You see the full percentage and changes if you look at it.
Now, we, we understand the salary and benefits is a matter of the insurance situation.
That's correct. Yeah, there's a 4.5% increase in health insurance, and then a flat budget had impacted the opera, other operational costs in order to absorb that.
Yeah, so you can still hear me? Okay.
Yes, yes, we're fine.
Okay, so yeah, if you, yeah, again, Roman numeral four and five have those, those breakdowns with the dollars and then the percentage change.
So a lot of us do the 2020 adopted budget to the 2021 budget request. We just eyeball it, see which direction it's going, as opposed to an actual, actual delta column, which. Some of us folks use. Like me.
Yeah, but we do have that. Again, it's just, it's not in, it's in the budget.
Yep, I understand.
So on that, on that graph, the savings of $182,111 on operating and maintenance, is that because the roadwork didn't, didn't occur?
Sorry.
We'll probably drill down on it somewhere, but.
Roman numeral five, Emily.
It's a four, minus 4%.
Yes.
So the operating maintenance would just be in, in the ONM itself, the, the road projects would have come out of the capital fund, the 410 fund.
So what didn't you spend 182,000 on this?
I'd have to go and.
I guess we're gonna find it, but.
So there's, there's savings in the, in the line items, you'll see for year-end projections. For all the parks, buildings and grounds, the streets and fleet, and the, in, in some of those.
You can see it in the line items. You can do comparisons. The staff was able to go into their own departments and were able to identify where they could find cuts to absorb the 4.5% increase in for insurance. And so they made those choices internally to, to find which areas they could, you know, they could take some risk in terms of those cuts, and that's, so each departmental budget will show you. And doing a cross-reference between 2020 and 2021, you'll be able to see that.
In some minor ones, just to point out, um, some of our utility costs, like natural gas, the fleet shop wasn't as high as anticipated. Um, whether it was a warm winter or not, or we were just more efficient with closing doors, um, so, unless he got out those kinds of savings.
Page three.
Okay.
Remember, this is general fund. Uh, so I'm going to just, I'm just going to name off a page, and if somebody has something on any page, just speak up, please.
Uh, we, we didn't do two.
Oh, I thought you were done with two.
That was, uh, no, that was the Roman numeral when they went back to.
Alright, go ahead.
Uh, the unrestricted, uh, unassigned balance. So, uh, it increases by nine hundred and thirty-one thousand one hundred and forty-four dollars. So, is, and then down the bottom, it shows that unassigned balance of, there's a difference, it's eight hundred and ninety-six, five fifty-three. But my question about it is, that additional unassigned funds that we already have there, is that because we did not spend, uh, a about, what was it, six hundred and fifty thousand, something in, in, uh, twenty twenty? And it's, and that's in that unassigned? I guess I want to see where that nine hundred and thirty-one thousand one forty-four comes from as we go through the.
Yeah, so the, um, one place to actually look is, um, what our projected expenditures are for twenty twenty, which is on page one. That's at the top, and so you'll see that we had adopted ele- eleven point eight million. And we're going to potentially spend eleven point one million. So a big portion of that does come from this year. Due to, you know, staff efficiencies and closure for COVID.
closures, would that also include, include the non-spent comprehensive plan? That was a fifty thousand dollars of ours.
Um.
Forward. Well, and the roadworks, there's a bunch of roadwork that didn't happen.
Road, road, different fund, yeah.
The fund balance is a function of both revenues and expenditures. So it's, it's what the revenues, whether they were over budget or under. Um, and whether expenditures were under or over budget, and it's the net to. If that's a positive number, then meaning that revenues exceed expenditures. Or likewise, those both go close into the fund balance. So it's the effect of all revenues and all expenditures. Increasing our fund balance at year end. So each line item has a projection for year end, so you can look at that and see, maybe the revenue performed better. Or maybe the, and, or maybe the expense is less than anticipated. So they all are a function of that fund balance increase, right?
Yeah.
So each line item in the document will show you what's, how it's contributing to that, right? Does that make sense?
It makes sense, but what it doesn't.
Look at it, we'll go ahead.
What it doesn't do is it give the, the items, significant items, I, we can't expect every penny, nickel, dime that was not spent, but the big blocks like capital, uh, projects that did not go through the comprehensive, I mean, when you see a fifty thousand. Um, we're not going to see where it's individually added in, it's just, um, part of that total leftover that is added to the new.
Yes.
Okay.
Exactly.
So we're not going to see it, Robert, some of those things.
By line item.
No, for twenty twenty-one, we will see new line items, where you see the, the comp plan is mentioned, the fifty thousand. But when I first looked at that, I, I was thinking, wait a minute, we didn't spend the fifty thousand from twenty twenty, so that should be a net zero for twenty twenty-one, because it just rolls over. And what in fact is that fifty thousand dollars is rolled in upfront. So that in twenty twenty-one, we will now see it subtracted, so we don't have a real clear line of following, say, that one big budget line item, and the same with some of the capital projects, it might be doing the same thing, rolling in.
I mean, to Kelly's point, you, you have to look at, uh, page three and four are the base, basically, the easy ways to look at this with the revenues and and the deltas on the revenues and the deltas on expenditures, those show in, in pretty clear, uh, two columns, you know, the third column and the fifth column. Uh, where, where, where we're picking those up. Now, once we go through detail on the budget, we will see a little bit more, uh, on, on the detail. And we'll, we'll be able to pick off some of that.
Page thirteen.
Sure, and I'll just, if I could, I, I'll bring it to thirteen for council member case. From a projected, from the capital projects, I think, uh, ca- council member, um, or Rusty's actually set, stated, one, one of the capital projects that was on the slate for this year, that will likely not be complete. Uh, you, you can't possibly be completed by the end of the year, so all the other ones, I believe, are projected to be completed by the end of the year. If I, if I, if I remember correctly, that's why I've updated the city council over the, over the, um, last, you know, nine months for monthly reports. So, let's see.
Page thirteen, the third line down on operating expenditures, Rusty used the comp plan. Page thirteen. And I just wanted to just show you this example so that you can see what's contributing. We had a budget of a hundred and one thousand dollars. But the actual is zero.
So.
Okay, slow, slow down, I'm, I'm on thirteen, so I see one hundred dash one fourteen dash seventy-five hundred comp plan.
Up above.
Thirty-two hundred.
It was.
You looking at thirty-two hundred?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Third line down under operating expenses. The adopted budget was a hundred and one thousand dollars for the comp plan, they created a line for capital down here.
Uh, it's.
And it's zero for your projection.
Diagonal drop, it went from one hundred, one fourteen dash thirty-two hundred.
Mm-hmm.
And now it picks up in one hundred, one fourteen dash seventy-five.
As a capital expense, yes.
Okay.
But notice on thirty-two hundred, the budget was one oh one, the actual is zero to the right of it. So that would be a contribution to the increase of our fund balance by a hundred and one thousand.
Right.
Do you follow me now?
Oh, yeah, I.
Okay. Sorry to take the time. Just trying to be helpful.
How did it move to, how did it move to capital outlay?
Because it should be a capital expense and not an operating expense.
And so it was, shows an operating expense.
Oh, yeah, just, it was misc- miscategorized last year, actually.
Okay.
We can go back to where we left off, I guess, page three and four.
Go to three now.
I'm going to, once again, I'm going to say a page number and wait, I'm going to count it, one and a half. Page three, any, any, uh, comments?
So, on page three, license and permits, you look at license and permits, it shows, uh, on a rough look at this, that the year-end projections have an excess of twenty-five thousand. And, uh, the budget request is one twenty-two. So, I'm looking at this, and we've, we've already received, this is just a point from some discussions we've been having on city council about the, um, business licenses. It's going to cost us fifteen grand, uh, twenty twenty-one and fifteen grand in twenty twenty-two. But we've already picked it up here in an increase in license and permits of twenty-five grand by the end of this year. So, there's eleven grand we've picked up in increased revenues, um, in twenty twenty-one budget.
Remember, these are all projections.
This is, if you look at page five, that includes three different revenue lines for licenses and permits, it's not just business licenses. It includes liquor licenses and right-of-way and street cut permits as well.
Yeah, gets tiny this print, doesn't it?
Yeah, sorry.
That's fine.
Magnifiers out.
And, and I mean, I think it's important to say something about, about the reduction, a reduction in revenue. A lot of, a lot of think tanks go out there and do a lot of analysis on revenue reductions. I'll tell you one of the more conservative or liber- libertarian, most libertarian think tanks out there, the Cato Institute has done a lot of, a lot of analysis on this. They find that only about thirty percent of that revenue comes back that you reduce, um, to, to a community, and it usually takes about five or more years to get that back. So, um, you will never see a hundred percent back from a, a revenue reduction, like a business license reduction or a tax, that, tax decrease. It doesn't fully come back, and that comes from some of the more, uh, conservative think tanks in the country. So.
Page four.
Yes, I have a question, why we have, uh, on the elected officials. Um, why it's forty thou- it's staying the same, I thought we had talked about reducing some of those, uh, line items.
Yeah, I had a discussion with them, they're, uh, the characterization of that is going to come from, uh, the lodging tax, but they put it there, yeah, it's, it's not actually coming from there.
What, could you, could you repeat that, so make sure you get the note on that?
It's, this is on page four.
Page four, okay.
Expenditures, very first line, elected officials.
Yeah.
It's been, sorry, that page wasn't updated, but it's updated in, on page.
The council, the council budget, we'll get that fixed.
Yeah.
Thanks, Emily, yeah.
Yep, I already talked to him about that.
So I have a couple of notes on here, the city manager, so if I look at the expenditures we had for city manager in twenty eighteen, it was a hundred and four thousand four sixty-three. To, in three years, we have an eighty-two percent increase in the city manager, uh, budget. And planning and building, we have a fifty-one and a half percent increase. And, um, so, I know we, um, Mayor Carr, you talked earlier about allocations into the different, uh, earlier on the pages in terms of employee, what is it, employee numbers or something? Where were you on that? Page, uh, X, XI. So I'd like to drill down more on that as we go along, uh, on these increases. And, and the last increase that I want to point out on this is, once again, in three years from twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-one, well, actually, from twenty eighteen to twenty twenty, we see a nineteen percent increase in salary and benefits. And twenty-plus percent in salary and benefits, um, including the twenty twenty-one budget request. And, uh, I want to contrast that to the private sector and, uh, the salary increases and benefits in the private sector over the same period of time.
Uh, let me just explain, because I, you're seeing something that you're, that's not being, uh, truly, um, understood. Uh, the issue with that is that in two thousand eighteen, that cost center was reduced by about four months of salary because the city manager was not here, he was actually, he had retired. So, you're, you're capturing an increase from a, a time when the city manager wasn't actually, um, even working for the city. Suzanne, it was a huge cost savings to the city, because Suzanne was the, the interim at the time. The other piece that you see is a twenty-five thousand dollar increase from a, an SBDC grant that artificially inflates that by twenty-five thousand dollars as well. So, a lot of different things, you just have to be careful when you're looking at the budget, that you don't try to extrapolate just, uh, base numbers. You have to look more in detail, because I will tell you, it's, it's not, there's def- I definitely didn't get a nineteen percent pay increase over the last three years.
So I'm just, I'm just pointing, I'm just getting these out for, for, uh, evaluation is, because, just because uh, we, we pay more money in, uh, salaries and benefits, that doesn't necessarily mean that, or pay less. The efficiencies in the departments is really what we need to be looking at here, and, uh, those are just, those are just big numbers to see. Um, particularly with some of the changes we've seen this year, so. I'm just, to the, bring them to the table right now for us to examine.
Excuse me, yeah, um, the other, with planning and building. Um, there was a part-time code enforcement officer. And now there's a full-time, um, code enforcement officer there, so that's part of that increase. Um, for salary and benefits. Uh, the average increase over, um, for, sorry, for health insurance. You know, has been around eight to nine percent a year. Um, so that's actually one of the main reasons for that increase. And then we did do a salary, um, study, we had a salary study done by an independent organization. Was it, it was last year, it predates me, but I know, um, the goal was to bring up, you know, salaries to, to competitive wages, to comparable wages. Um, and that takes into account public service, um, positions, similar positions in similar sized communities in the state. A lot of that.
And over a two-year period of time, which is reflected in there.
Robert, if I could help you, uh, because I noticed that one too. If you look at the two lines, the first line on page thirteen where it has the full-time, it does go up from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one by five thousand one hundred and forty-seven dollars. But if you look at the part-time salaries on the second line, it more than, um, offsets it with a minus. This is on page thirteen, it is a minus eight thousand one hundred and sixty-three. So by converting the part-time, uh, over to full-time, you do see the bump up on the full-time year over year, but in the part-time, you see a significant drop, uh, such that we end up with a net benefit of about three thousand dollars.
I must have a different page thirteen, that's alright. I'll, I'll talk you about it.
Summary.
Was it?
Tail is on the individual pages.
Yeah, I had to look at the sum, the, the details on page thirteen to understand the summary on page four.
Okay.
So the net is, it, it works out that we did save some money, um, between the two lines.
Page five?
Uh, yes, that's my, my pet rock is the vendor fee being in there. Um, and this is to try to fulfill a promise to Elijah Murphy where he came up and testified. He wanted the city council to accurately state what things are in here, where we have the sales tax vendor fee. That, we, we stopped that in nineteen ninety-six. So that money, that one hundred and fifty-one thousand and twenty.
We're not on.
Hundred fifty-one thousand.
Okay, right.
Should be added to two percent.
And it's, um.
May I finish?
We can hear you, Darren.
Yeah, somebody's talking over me. Um, that whole line should be stricken, we don't set aside vendor fee anymore, because we can't give it out anymore. That ended in nineteen ninety-six. So if we want to have money taken out of the, the line one hundred dash zero 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 dash three one three one, which by nomenclature says it's the full two percent of the sales. The one, the other one percent is in the four-ten, and we'll get to that one later on. That is not a true statement, it's not a full two percent. That is two percent minus the vendor fee that they have listed, which we can't hand back out. That line should go away, and the line that says two percent sales should be the total.
Should be grossed up.
It should be grossed up, and that vendor fee eliminated, so there's no confusion what we spend our money for, because we lose track, there's, there's no downtown project then listed to where we line up this a hundred and fifty-one thousand being spent on downtown projects. So Elijah Murphy is actually very accurate in stating that this needs to change, so it's truthful.
So I had, I had a conversation with them about a week ago, and asked that we have subtotals on that. So it's broken out, and it's, it's, uh, uh, they were, they're working on that situation. In other words, the vendor fee is part of that, and it, it's kind of what you're saying, but, uh, if, if they're going to do that, they need to make it part of a subtotal. And that being the total sales tax situation.
I would support.
Yeah, it just needs to go away.
Member Niels, um, I think we should eliminate line item one hundred zero 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 three one three. Councilmember Niels, I think we should eliminate line item one hundred zero 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 three one three five and the corresponding line item in the four-ten fund.
Correct.
And that a hundred percent of the two percent sales tax be accounted for in line item one hundred zero 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 dash three one three one sales tax general fund two percent and the corresponding line item in the four-ten fund.
Well, if you were to do that, I guess I would struggle with the fact that the monies are supposed to be spent in the downtown area. So how would you, how would you identify that it was a vendor fee allocation that was spent specifically on projects in downtown?
Well, I think we need to go to a different section and add an expense and say downtown development project and put that amount in there if that's what we choose to do.
Yeah, this, this is a good discussion and it's something that we've had with the mayor over the last week or so. Yeah, you know, eliminating it, it is kind of confusing the way that it's been accounted for over the years. And I know Councilmember Case has had concerns about it as well. I think it's even gone back to the time when she was was finance director. So it's, or I don't know, maybe not. I could barely see your face over there. So.
Here. It, it actually occurred a couple of years before I came on staff. And it's just, all, all it is, is a math computation calculation to back out what would be the vendor fee if it were a credit to the, to the businesses. And it's just a reclassification of revenue to a different line item. And, and we don't book expenses to a revenue line item. We book expenses to an expenditure line item for good practice. And so if we want to track what's being spent on a particular project or a particular location, we create a line item and we track it in an expenditure line item. And the sources of those funds to be spent are our revenues. And there are several revenues in our, in our budgets that have specific uses tied to them. And so we, we can account for that. But it, we don't account for expenses in revenue account line items. There are sources of funds to be used as and expended in expenditures. And that's that's simple, basic accounting principle for wherever you are doing accounting, be it governmental, schools, hospitals, or private sector. So I personally support what Rusty has proposed and as I described, absolutely. And I think that it will be helpful. And then as we describe our revenues, they will be.
And Robert, as an additional reason why it's important or it's helpful as a council member, mathematically, you can then kind of figure out what's the almost an equivalent of the GDP of Woodland Park just by doing the math backwards. If that, that vendor fee was rolled back in, so you had the total and then you could actually just work it back. So you could track over time how, how the city's doing in terms of what we're really selling.
GDS, which is because we provide services and not product.
GDS.
So I, I discussed exactly what you're talking about. And making an expenditure category, use some GL work. And we can then we'll have very transparent what we're doing with that money.
Absolutely.
He, I, at the last budget meeting we had, Val had said, okay, this is what we should do then. And we had a consensus. So, and so that is how we would like it to be reflected in the budget.
Thank you.
So we do need to do that.
And it would help me fulfill a promise to somebody.
Sure. And it makes sense.
It makes sense.
It's more transparent and it's clear and it describes what's actually happening.
Yeah, I mean, he was accurate.
My, my only tangential thought on that was if we really want to put this as a revenue note that it really needs to be subtitled if we're going to do that. But the real, the real crux of the situation is it's an expenditure situation more than the correct revenue.
You can always calculate what it would be by doing the math at whatever percentage you want to call it. I mean, in, in history, historically, or hysterically, as we like to refer to it. It's been, or last it was one percent, but it was for many years, three point three 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 three. And at one point, it actually matched the state. But it's just math of that line item of two percent general sales tax. So you can always determine what that might be by doing the math. But the real crux of it is the spending of the money.
So, so Emily, I would suggest that if I add up the thirty-one thirty-one and the thirty-one thirty-five, any combination of that does not equal twice thirty-one thirty-two. So there's, I have a math problem there that doesn't, the thirty-one thirty-one is the gross two percent or is it net two percent?
Well, right now it's reflecting net because it is.
If you add those numbers together, you don't get.
I was gonna say mathematically, it's wrong. Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Emily, are you accounting for the vendor fee on the, on the schools, one point oh nine percent?
No, it's not. It's not required by.
No. It gets paid.
So the one point oh nine percent is actually gross.
The one point oh nine is gross, yes.
So we would just add three one three one to three one three five and then we would have the full two percent.
Well, isn't the admin fee on three eight oh two that vendor fee that the, the city basically gets for processing the sales tax for the school?
So that's later on.
That's a flat fee.
It's not a vendor fee.
So to me, the most interesting part is.
For the staff time it takes to process that and to count, do the calculations and to cut those checks every month.
And process thousands of tax return.
That is, that is three eight oh two, right? Line item three eight oh two.
Three eight oh two, correct.
Yeah, all right. So my, in my mind, the most interesting part of it is the expenditure part of it.
Yes, sir.
I think we had that settled last time, but I.
Well, where, where do you want those, that expenditure line to be placed in, in public works? Where is it that we're saying we're placing it?
Well, of course, this is general fund revenue, so.
Yeah, and you obviously the.
The attorney can hardly wait to speak up.
No, 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 no.
So one of the, the issues that we discussed last week with and over the, the last couple of weeks with the mayor is how do you account for these expenditures? And this is what Darren or the city manager is talking about is do we create a new cost center, which is a whole new budget page?
Fund.
Fund, basically fund, it would still be within the general fund for these expenditures. The issue with that is for your edification is expenditures that you make downtown can be from a variety of different functions that we provide.
Yes.
And so having a line item that says downtown projects, as it were, could include streets, it could include parks and wrecked flowers, power, all these things that are already expended elsewhere. And then you could get into the mess of having interdepartmental transfers to make sure that all balances out. The suggestion that I had thrown out there, and I'm not the finance guru by any means, was perhaps we just have a, an appendage to the budget that says, these are the projects that we did downtown and this is what they totaled to altogether as opposed to creating a new line item in the budget.
I would agree to that.
Well, what about?
Further cloud it.
Well, we have a section, the operating expenditures where we have the one hundred dash, the one oh five group, where you have up to eight zero zero three, where we're listing special projects. That one is the five hundred dollar for dear awareness. Why couldn't we have a one oh five dash eight zero zero four in downtown beautification project?
But those are elected officials.
Hybrid of operations, maintenance and capital which come out of three, all different places.
I like the idea of subsidiary ledger as you described to delineate the, the particular projects.
I think, I think staff would recommend that as well.
Be okay, as long as it's identified in there. I just want to see it identified properly and, and not get all confused with this vendor fee. So that, that would be fine with, with myself and.
Yeah, I've, I've talked with extensively about it. My, my, I'm always about transparency and accountability. I always worry when we have a side sheet or something like that because I'm used to having a flow-through accounting situation, but I, as long as we have it documented somewhere, I'm, I'm fine with that. And we can put notes in here. See page nine hundred forty-six.
Identify where those expenses in the subsidiary ledger have been booked.
That would be fine. And it would meet the intent of what the testimony was that he was asking us to look at.
Well, that, that makes a lot clearer for us if we can do it that way. I think that'll, that'll be helpful.
Well, then we don't want to do it if it's easy.
And for us to understand the staff, yes. Thank you. Does anybody else have any more comments on that one that maybe? I, I think that's the solution that, that would be easier for us to, to, for transparency purposes.
Good, page seventy-two.
I do want to thank Chief DeYoung for indicating that we're going to have less traffic fines this year. So we all know that we can get away with a little bit more.
Good luck with that.
I forget, are we in page three or four?
Did you say seventy-two or what, what page did you need, Mayor?
Seven and start with the detail. I think it will help us move through this.
Can we go back to six? I had the question. This is on thirty-eight fifty-one sale of assets. And I think this is where I was trying to understand where we had the vehicle utilization review committee. We were trying to liquidate a few vehicles. I, I saw that we have sale of assets, five thousand dollars. Did, does that include some cars that might have been liquidated?
I think those are in streets or something, right?
Is that where we're going to find that?
I think are.
Those assets are more than just vehicles.
That's what I was curious, what the sale of assets, what those assets were. Because there was no detail.
Vehicles, look up in the, see what exactly else in that, in that account.
Emily, I'm sorry, you were broken again.
Oh, I was just saying vehicles and I can look up right now if you want me to look the other things up that were, are under that line item.
They are under that line item, is that what you?
That's one of them, yes.
It would include vehicles and I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Emily, speaking out of turn, it's a placeholder for any other stuff that we might need to liquidate. It can include file cabinets or any other assets we might have that we can get value out of.
Could we just put, have a, maybe a bullet number five? And, and it's kind of honoring what Val has been trying to do with the Verk is to show that his efforts did produce something. So if we could just show some of the vehicles being reduced somewhere.
I think those were projections in the future, but I always welcome more detail wherever we can get it.
A simple bullet would be adequate.
So I highlighted the lodging tax as a note to myself to talk about that. Maybe we don't want to talk about that. The, the, the vendor fee stuff, we, we'd kind of talked about expensing that out of the lodging tax as opposed to a new fund category. But I don't need a comment if nobody else needs to discuss that.
I have a logic.
Well, I, you know, I was looking for a place to expenditure this stuff. With, but, you know, creating a whole new fund.
I wouldn't commingle with lodging tax and conservation trusts.
Yeah, I, I was, yeah. Never mind, page seven.
I was gonna say our CTF and lodging are separate funds. So those are showing transfers in from those funds. So when you go to, when we go through those pages, you'll see those numbers. And how then they, they are transferred as transfer into the general fund.
Yeah, I, I wasn't particularly interested in the transfer, but as a subject for lodging tax. So I apologize. So kind of in line with, or not in line with it, but about the lodging tax. Page seven, we've got Woodland Park Main Street has been moved to ACM. I'm not understanding why that's moved out of elected officials budget into ACM and why it would be in ACM if it's coming from the lodging tax, if that's where the funding is coming from.
So, so I am the ACM and I.
Oh, hi.
Hi there. I'm Michael Ross, by the way. I can't see me, Assistant City Manager. I, I, I do hate to pass the buck. I'm not quite sure of the reason for the transfer. That's something that I can provide to you at a later time if you like.
Okay, if I, I can provide a little bit of insight because as a part of the discussion about that readjustment. So the, the optics of having the Woodland Park Main Street in the elected official budget, it makes it look like it's your expense. And while the budget is your discretion throughout the entire document. And we looked in talking with the mayor about having, based on our previous conversations here at council meetings over the last several weeks, having that reflected where we do all of our other community outreach stuff and that's under the ACM now with the restructuring. So that's why we've moved it there is because ultimately community outreach, we figured Main Street was the best like-to-like expenditure. I don't know if that helps make sense why we did that.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Mr. Mayor, have a comment?
Yes.
I still, I'd have to comment because I disagree with this accounting for the Conservation Trust Fund and for the Lodging Tax Fund. I don't understand why we transfer between.
What page?
Well, it's the revenues on, on six, under transfers in. And then the individuals' funds on thirty-eight and thirty-six. I don't know why we don't just account for the expenses in that fund. And it may be because the expenses are bigger than just what's in the fund, but transferring between the funds, I think defeats the purpose of having the individual funds for these dollars. Just want that on the record because I disagree with the accounting.
Emily.
And I've said it before, but just for the record and we don't have to argue with it.
Well, no, I, I think it's useful. We, we have a full-blown finance person sitting on our desk.
I've mentioned it in, in years past and I see we're still doing it that way.
So what would you, Kelly, for, for my edification? How would you like to see this reflected?
Expenses are accounted for in the fund. We don't.
Oh, don't transfer them out into.
Or transfer in. We just have, the source is the revenue.
Yeah.
And the expense is the expense.
Yeah.
And the fund carries, it's either fund balance. And if it, if it needs to be subsidized, it's subsidized from the general fund. I just, in my education, in my experience, you create the fund and you account for it in the fund. You don't, and transferring money around, we handle it just like we do with the Culture and Recreation Fund. There's not enough revenue there to cover the expenses, but we account for a hundred percent of the expenses in there. And then the subsidy comes from the general fund. And I, I think it needs to be done the same way here and in the Conservation Trust Fund. But that's just my opinion and that's if I were in charge and, and I was king for a day or queen for a day. That's how I would do it. But I just think it's cleaner. I know that the auditors are always.
I agree.
I agree.
I think it's great.
Yeah, it cleans it up.
Questioning why transfer all the money around.
You get, you get dizzy chasing it.
That's just my.
Suzanne, if you're there, for the record, Jim Paff has been able to join the meeting at seven ten.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I will take note of that.
Thank you. So I'm always about putting things in the right slots myself. Emily, can you explain any reasoning why we can't take up Kelly's suggestion?
So, um, thank you, Mayor. The funds were created, those two funds were created in. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
They were created in twenty eighteen. And my understanding is that rather than, because it's a portion of, of those expenses, it doesn't cover everything. It would be complicated and actually maybe more confusing because then you're seeing, you know, only a portion of that fund. And then when you go to look at, say, because, for example, page thirty-eight Conservation Trust Fund, portion of that goes to park maintenance. And then to the WAC. And then to the WAC, and and then for next year, the the fire suppression capital item. So it would actually maybe be more confusing because then you're not able to look at those two departments or those cost centers and see and see those total expenses. You'd be switch switching when looking at, you know, the Conserv Trust Fund. Oh, well, what what was the total for, you know, the for WAC? Well, we'd have to, we have to look at two different pages, right? So it would be more confusing, I think, rather than, you know, showing what of those items of those line items are are being paid for with, in this example, on page thirty-eight Conservation Trust Fund dollars, which come from lottery proceeds.
I understand. I get it. Those expenses are much larger and a portion of them are being funded by this. That's why it was always easier to have it in the general fund and account for it in the report each year. But some people didn't feel like that was transparent enough.
Yeah, so.
Anyway, I'm over it.
So the.
I won't mention it again.
So we were with you for a while.
I got it. Thank you for entertaining me. I'm done, Mayor.
No problem.
So, yeah, it it gives one a false sense of expenditures or revenues if we're if we're not accounting for them somewhere. So I think I think that's basically where we're at with that.
It works.
Page seventy-three? Oh, I'm sorry. Page seven?
Okay, we're on seven.
So that is the number that we were saying was wrong upfront. This is the correct number, the twenty-five thousand. Got it. Thank you.
I would just like to say that in the travel and training budget, my portion of that I would forgive, and I won't be using it. And we can use that towards funding that Main Street contribution.
So this was identified as a pool. I request to be put in as a pool. All the reserve go to debt reserve at the end. And not specifically twenty grand for travel or anything like that. Page eight.
So Val, so we're kind of mentally just putting an asterisk by it that if we come down.
And, you know, it could include attorneys, it could include consultants, the Miss, what's her name, Kathy, whatever. Anyway, there's a whole pool of things that we listed. We had a consensus by a lack of objection and which is why we moved on with that. But my as the as a consensus was all the reserve goes away into debt reserve at the end.
Okay.
So even if there's twenty-five thousand left, it all goes there.
Okay.
Number, page eight. Page nine. Page ten. I noted that the on page ten, the cemetery capital of sixty grand is in the twenty-twenty year-end projection.
That's a good point. That's that looks to be, that needs to be something we need to probably rectify.
Yeah, so it needs to be moved over, right?
No, that's the, I thought that was going to be spent this year.
The twenty thousand dollars. Yeah, I don't think it's sixty this year. We'll we'll work on that and get that fixed.
Okay, thank you.
On that, Val, if we talk about the decrease in the salary and benefits for the city clerk, it's a pretty significant decrease. So can you talk about how this was reallocated?
Well, that's a personnel switch, right? I'm sorry, go ahead.
Move to page eleven? Um, so that this city clerk on page ten is just the city clerk.
So back in twenty.
In the past, my budget has had HR underneath it. It has had community engagement underneath it. Those things have been removed now and moved under to the ACM.
Suzanne, so in twenty twenty, when it was one hundred ninety-two thousand three hundred and forty, how many employees was that, three?
That was myself, that was my deputy city clerk, and our HR person.
And of that, two of them now have been moved, the function or people have been moved over to the ACM. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you. Only only part of it, right? We still have HR?
HR is.
HR has been moved to the ACM.
That that employee's moved over, yeah, okay.
Emily, maybe we can place a note in in that one that that kind of directs people so that it could be clear maybe on on the.
Okay, it's because the note, page eleven says who's included.
I'm just saying on the city clerk site, so if they're looking at it, it helps them add a note to that.
Great.
So in, we're not eleven yet.
Sorry.
We'd be on eleven?
We can be on eleven.
I'm on ten, I'm back to ten.
I have two pages marked, that's all. Could you tell me on bullet one on page eleven, the positions that are in that salary line item, please? It only has three.
I'll let the ACM.
ACM.
Let the ACM respond.
So it would be myself, it would be our HR generalist, it would be our management analyst, and then the public information specialist position.
And the PIO. Thank you.
So.
It doesn't, the four, so because it said, I mean, it says ACM includes HR analysts and communications.
Got it.
We're we're also absorbing IT partially, right?
IT is its own separate cost center, so that's you'll see that separately.
You told me that.
Responsibility, but I I will be overseeing the IT function. It's it's for the sake of this exercise, it's a dotted line, but it does have its own separate cost center.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to remind myself.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. And on page eleven, I'm sorry, Kelly, you're still up.
That's all I had on that.
And I've got a ten question.
So I, on page eleven, I note that we have the cemetery capital there. So that adjustment back on page ten will be, need to be reflected somehow.
Yeah, it's double listed.
So I think part of that is the sub-ification and all of that portion, and then the next one is the actual build-out. So there.
It's actually the twenty-twenty-one, if you look at twenty-twenty-one, there's nothing there. But then the ACM is a new cost center, so that's just twenty-twenty-one, then you'll see that sixty thousand there.
Which is road, yeah.
And I have one last question on page ten.
So that's a different cost center.
Rusty, go ahead.
What is codification in our budget?
I'm excited to answer that, if you'd let me. It's one of the most exciting things a city clerk does. Every every year when council passes ordinances, they need to be codified into the, if it's a charter amendment during an election that gets voted in. If it's an ordinance that's passed, they need to be codified into the code and the charter, and it gets updated every single year. So we get the new book, we get it online updated, and everything is current.
Okay, thank you.
So that was page, Jim.
Just to reclarify on the cemetery capital, those are two, two different cost items. Different cost numbers on the page eleven and page ten. Are we, I I just wanted to be real clear on this. Hundred and twenty thousand, I I just, I'm not clear on.
No, they're not. It's it's the same. We only have budgeted sixty thousand dollars for the road improvements. We generally have twenty thousand right now for the sonar and and surveying right now. So those are two different costs. We're going to get that fixed.
Okay, so so the number is wrong, just to be clear what I was hearing, since I kind of ran it, I'm looking at my PDF and not my notes. But so the number is going to be different on page ten, correct?
It'll just be moved to the, it'll be moved to twenty-twenty-one, it should be.
It's, sorry, the second, it's under the budget, under twenty-twenty.
Okay.
Sorry.
Not spending, which year are we spending sixty thousand dollars?
In twenty-twenty-one.
Okay, so then on page ten, the column of twenty-twenty needs to be zero.
Correct. Well, not, that column needs to be.
Twenty-twenty-one is basically what you're saying, moving that over to twenty-twenty-one? That's what I'm just.
So I, my understanding, and I guess that's incorrect, was that sixty thousand was going to be spent this. But it sounds like that's not correct, so that number will be updated on the twenty-twenty year-end projections. But if you go to page eleven.
That's next year's budget.
Sixty.
Okay, I'm with you now. Okay.
But twenty-twenty-one, sorry, it's the two different years. It's just confusing because a page eleven is a new cost center, so it only has twenty-twenty-one.
We're not spending, we're not spending sixty thousand dollars in twenty-twenty, and we're not spending in twenty-twenty-one. So twenty-twenty on page ten needs to be zero.
I I think there's still potentially, Darren, correct me if.
That's correct. There's going to be money spent this year.
Well, we did the sonar and the survey, right?
Correct.
The twenty K, I get, but but just to be very clear, before you say something, Kip, I just want to throw this in here. So therefore, on page ten, it's got to be the one hundred one sixteen seventy-five hundred cost center. So you got to drop it down a line and move it over. Am I am I correct on this? Because I mean, that's kind of picky.
That's true. It's total, it's it is a, well, it is a capital outlay, but it needs to be in twenty-twenty-one.
But if you've got the same cost center listed there, that's just a techie, a a picky accounting thing. If you've got that same one twelve seventy-five hundred cost center, then it's not being spent out of that budget. It's moved over under the ACM when one sixteen. I mean, I, if you're going to account for it there.
Should be zeroed out. I guess you're right. You're saying it should be zeroed out because it's being moved over to the ACM's budget.
There should be nothing more than the one twelve seventy-five hundred. You're going to have to put a one sixteen seventy-five hundred if you're going to account for it there. It's a different cost center.
There should be the twenty thousand, the twenty thousand that was budgeted.
Again, I'm talking about the sixty thousand.
You're right. You're absolutely right. That's correct. Councilmember Pfaff.
So it just sounds like you want to pitch in here.
Just to be clear on what's being spent this year, under the city clerk budget was the survey and sonar for twenty.
Right.
And then next year, in the ACM's budget, the it was the sixty for the roads. Yeah, just the road build-out, correct.
So then.
Sorry, did you say twenty thousand?
Correct, Emily.
Thank you.
Also, your notation on, you've got two twos notations on ten, that won't work for both of those. One's membership dues and one's capital, anyway, just a nitpicky thing.
I I see it.
So, sorry, twenty thousand is expected for twenty-twenty for the cemetery capital, is that correct?
That's correct.
Year-end projections on page ten, correct.
Okay, and I didn't follow what Councilman Pfaff was saying.
It's it's fine.
Well, go ahead, Darren.
Yeah, I I get it. Basically, we need to remove the sixty, the sixty is already being accounted for in the ACM's budget. So the only thing you need in capital outlay or in the seventy-five hundred general or line item is the twenty thousand dollars for for budget year twenty-twenty. And then we need to remove the note or add a note there that that maybe that's note number three that says sonar and survey.
Correct. There we go. Bingo. So we're on to page eleven. Anything further on page eleven? Page twelve. The municipal court that we're all so familiar with. Oh, really? Oh, wow. I didn't do it. Page thirteen, planning and building.
On twelve, I know we're, I'm pinching pennies, so I'll be a penny pincher for this meeting.
That's fine. What page are you on?
On twelve still.
Okay.
This will be the training and travel for the municipal court. Historically, we spent seven hundred eighty-five dollars in eighteen. In nineteen, it was one thousand two hundred and thirty-seven dollars. In twenty-twenty, we expect it to be two hundred dollars. Why would we budget seven thousand?
I'll I'll let Suzanne respond to this. This is because we hired a new deputy city or deputy municipal judge. And there was some training that that she needed to do. It appears that we're, so if you can, Suzanne, go ahead and chime in on that one.
Sure. What I'd like to bring your attention to is that in twenty-twenty, we had the seven thousand budgeted, and we're not going to spend that because Carla, our court clerk, was supposed to attend a training on our new computer, computer software, on our full-court software. It's a training that she has to do. We didn't get to spend that because of COVID, and so now we've moved it into twenty-twenty-one. If she is able to go, she's to go to Albuquerque. It's a one-on-one training that she needs to get for her software that she uses. It's only happens once every few years.
Okay, so that's why there's such a big difference between the actuals from eighteen nineteen and then what we have budgeted for twenty, which is now twenty-twenty-one because we did not execute in twenty-twenty.
That's correct, sir.
Thank you.
Suzanne, does the judge still go to that conference?
They do if, but again, this year, everything was canceled, so they didn't go. We just have it as a little bit of a placeholder. It's a little portion of that seven thousand dollars. It's a, it's up in the mountains. It's not a faraway conference and not very costly.
Thank you.
That sounds like a boondoggle.
Okay, page thirteen.
And Robert, this goes back to your earlier comment when I was trying to say that there was a plus up on the line, the eleven hundred that shows the salary going up five thousand one hundred and forty-seven from twenty-twenty to twenty-twenty-one for the full-time. But if you look at the next line, this is where you see the the savings, where on the part-time, where it goes from thirty-one eight sixty-three in twenty-twenty down to twenty-three seven hundred. The net is a savings of about three thousand dollars with those two.
That's correct.
Bringing that part-time to a full-time position.
Now I see it. Anything else on thirteen?
Yeah, yeah, real quick, what was the the uptick in insurance specifically, you know, that we got up ten thousand bucks or more?
Four point five percent in health insurance.
Just the twenty-five, that's the health insurance? Okay.
Four point five percent.
Okay.
Plus, the person went from part-time to full-time and it took on benefits, that part-time person.
That's correct. That's correct.
Yeah, I get that. Okay.
Page fourteen, finance. I note your CVF funds, those are probably dynamic, as as I stated when we started this. This budget is dynamic, it's aspirational. This is probably one of those numbers that will change, clear to our year-end projection.
But it has a revenue component, too, that should equal it, so it really is a net zero effect. Whatever it is.
Age fifteen.
That's great, sorry, Councilman Case, excuse me, the revenue is reflected under, I believe it's under state grants.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes.
On fifteen, question I had is just a note point here. What is the dynamic that causes us to have, like, on build, on building? You know, park planning and building, you know, overtime is not much, but we've got a pretty decent amount when it comes to parks and buildings and grounds. What's the dynamic there?
I like Kip. Yeah, there you go.
Are you looking for an explanation on building repair and maintenance?
Yeah, because, you know, built, like, building services, you can see potential for overtime, but we see so much more in parks, buildings, and grounds. So I'm just curious what the different dynamic is between the two.
For for the buildings, or are you talking about?
For parks, buildings, and grounds.
For salaries and benefits, I'm sorry.
No, 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 for overtime.
Overtime.
There's an overtime dynamic that's so much different on regular building as opposed to outside stuff. So what's the dynamic there?
So parks, buildings, and grounds, overtime, basically, most of that refer is cost costing out snowplow removal for after-hours. We also do baseball field prep after-hours. It's. We also do baseball field prep after hours, it's those type of services, it's the on-call for picking up deer and, and so on and so forth.
Okay, gotcha, that's, that's all, I had, just had a note here, I wanted to know.
And on page fifteen, again, nitpicky over the training and travel, twenty eighteen was ninety four dollars. Twenty nineteen was seven hundred and seventy four dollars. We're projecting twenty twenty to be five hundred dollars, but we are repeating the budget of three thousand dollars. So what, why are we making that such a large travel? Well, historically, it hasn't been even a thousand dollars.
Similar to Suzanne's comment, the training that was scheduled for last year was canceled, so we're moving it forward to next year. Also, with our parks, buildings and grounds crew, our current longevity member on that crew is two years. We're, in the past, we had folks there for fifteen to twenty years, so getting them up to speed on equipment. Also doing park inspections, I need to do some training on pesticides, those type of issues.
So basically, it's the training from twenty twenty, the amount of training you would have done in twenty twenty, and what we would have traditionally done in twenty twenty one. Added together is now why it stays about three thousand dollars.
I budgeted three thousand in twenty twenty, it wasn't spent due to COVID, I'm moving it forward to twenty twenty one.
Okay, so you have five hundred dollars though listed as projected spending.
Correct.
We're moving three thousand.
So I'm projecting five hundred, I, I don't know what we are year-to-date, I, I would say we're probably around three hundred. I'm projecting a little bit more, just for online trainings, to, to get up, like, for flagger training. We get people to come in and do it fairly cheap.
So you're not netting out?
So.
You're just asking for three, just.
Same as last year, moving it forward to next.
Okay.
Rusty, would you like a note on that for specificity on the training?
No, I, I, I just was trying to understand, and it makes sense why it went from three and only spent it five hundred COVID.
So I have a note on twenty one twenty and twenty one twenty one. That I put a question mark, these seem like obvious candidates for vendor fee expenditures. Any, any thoughts on that, Emily?
Which?
Streetscape and beautification.
Line one, one hundred one eighteen, twenty one twenty, and then twenty.
Twenty one.
One twenty one.
So I can just share what those line items go to, that's basically your flowers downtown. That's also light poles, they get damaged and hit, we replace those as well, any concrete work that's associated with that damage.
So that would be very appropriate, as the mayor suggesting, highlight those in the annex as. Former vendor fee downtown projects.
You could do the same thing with item one hundred, one eighteen, sixty five hundred at the very bottom. That's light pole replacement, however, all of our light poles aren't necessarily in the downtown, so it's, you gotta just be careful when, which ones hit where.
Yeah, my, mine was a question if this was an appropriate place to start thinking about isolating those expenditures elsewhere.
Right, so we can account.
Well, the, these, this, this to be clear, that you're, you're count, you're trying to move lodging tax related to, to vendor fee related now. These are paid for primarily through lodging tax revenues. As you're seeing, you're just seeing the expenditures come out of, out of the public works department. Again, the, the discussion and the approval I got from city council was to establish a, a contract that would account for these. And we would have a, a separate appendix spreadsheet that would account for these projects downtown.
So, so technically, they would come under that contract possibly?
Right.
It's possible that, I mean, again, you, you already, you have this used for, for lodging tax right now, which accounts for these, these expenditures. Ones that you, you just identified are already accounted for by lodging tax, correct, Kip?
Yes, I believe so.
I just have a comment, and, and it's not to be rude or anything else, I'm very, I've, I've been very. There are ways for us to have our flowers in downtown and have them be lovely. I just absolutely refuse to appropriate money to buy sticks to put in the ground any one more year. So I am, if we're not going to invest and, and engage our businesses to assist with that. I mean, if you go to Telluride or Breckenridge or even Woodland Professional Building. To take care of flowers as a cooperative and a collaborative, then I absolutely refuse. Am against spending any money at all anymore to put sticks in the ground, so.
I would second that, and I just would share some information for council, not getting defensive or anything of that nature. This year, our seasonals were not filled due to COVID.
Right.
So of the seasonals, we have one, later in the year, we tried to fill two seasonal slots. We received zero applications, and that's who typically waters them.
Right.
And does that kind of maintenance, but I absolutely agree, we need to do a better job.
We can't force water into the ground and expect those kinds of things to survive, and that's why I think maybe a good, another. That's what they look like, I'm sorry, and I don't, I don't mean this against any one person whatsoever, I appreciate the effort. But if we could build, and maybe it's something Keep Woodland Park Beautiful might be able to work on building that relationship. With the businesses and maybe everyone, if they work together and, and in just maintaining them. And watering them, they have to be watered every day.
We actually had folks come in on Saturday and Sunday.
And it needs to be a gentle watering, not pressure washing. And so it's, it's just something that I would challenge Keep Woodland Park Beautiful, maybe Main Street gets involved. And in, in finding a way to make them lovely, because they can be. And I know it's challenging, but they can be, if they can do it in these other cities that have highways going through, then Breckenridge did it. Then I think we can figure out a way to do it too, so that's just my two cents. I think it's wasteful spending of money, the way that they end up looking, like, within a week.
I'm, I'm just gonna add my one cent to it.
Go ahead.
And also not to use Pueblo anymore for the greenhouse, but to use Alma. It's Alma, the flowers are born and bred at high altitude and are, are very, very hardy. So, and I've recommended it before, but Pueblo is not the right location to be purchasing mountain town flowers from.
And, and just as a side note, my sister was the one that did the flowers in Telluride as their florist in town. And so she has resources and how it worked, and so we can glean some information from some of those folks around. That are doing a really good job and see if we can't.
Yeah, Pam Mike's.
Repeat it.
Has planted a lot of stuff, and they seem to be thriving, so wherever she's getting them, that's where we need to target.
The care.
And, and your staff, I applaud them because they don't like it either.
I'm sure they don't.
They, they have ideas that, where they just wanna roll out some nice green turf with some flowers in it, power wash it every year and throw it out every summer and bring it back in. Or they've talked about metal flowers that look nice, that, but, you know, as soon as you put something out there that's not nailed down, it seems to disappear.
I know I'm preaching to the choir, but thank you for entertaining me.
By the way, I totally agree with Hillary on the source of flowers, but my wife and I have been up there, those are expensive flowers. Man, that, that greenhouse is like real expensive, so I hope it's not too much. But on fifteen, there was something I just realized I hadn't made a tick on here to note. What was the change in cost in trash disposal service? That we budgeted sixteen thousand for this year and were shooting for seventeen thousand when it was so much lower beforehand?
So this year, we, we were shooting for sixteen one, we, end of year was ten. So the reason for the end of year projection at ten was we canceled services at a lot of our facilities. And we are just carrying forward with a small increase for twenty twenty one, what it should have been if it was a normal year.
Okay, so what was the change in price?
Just, we're anticipating a contract increase from twenty to twenty one. And the reason why year to, or year-end projecting, projection was so low in twenty was we had canceled a lot of our services during COVID.
And, and I'm not trying to beat the dead horse, I think you don't know what I'm asking, but it, it was less than half of that prior two years.
Right.
Yeah, Kip, I can, I think one thing I'd add, Kip, is that there was a credit that, that the trash service gave us in two thousand nineteen as well. So that, so it was far less than what we normally would have spent, I don't, you don't see it, but that, they gave us a credit that year.
But we, it was only, that was a thousand dollars less, I mean, we, we got a fundamental change in the contract, it looks like here.
I'm not su- sure what the credit was in the past, I'm just going off current numbers of what we're billed currently from our trash provider.
Yeah, I mean, it's the same trash provider all three years.
Yes.
Yes.
Went from eight thousand to around sixteen projected.
Yes, sir.
This has actually come up as a, in a conversation about potentially RFP-ing this out. So there, we, obviously, we have two different providers in town, and maybe there's an opportunity to look at that in the future as well.
Well, if it's doubled, I would definitely look at an RFP.
Absolutely.
Jim, you're right, I mean, it's, it's doubled more than, so free market will bring it back down.
So we have two trash providers, Teller County, our Teller Waste and Waste Management. It's ironic because some of them won't pick up our facilities, so we have Waste Management as well at other facilities. Cause Teller Waste won't go to those facilities, it's, it, we're really.
I was gonna. Sorry.
Go ahead.
Oh, I was just gonna say, I, I was gonna add that we do u- use both of them. And I don't know if, Kip, one of the reasons is the recycling cost, I know. That it's going up significantly for Teller Waste.
Yes.
That, that could be the increase from twenty to twenty one, I can't, I can't defend the increase from twenty compared to eighteen or nineteen. All I can tell you is we, there's two providers, and it's amazing how they'll do some things and they won't do some things. So for example, the wastewater plant, they won't pick up there, they won't pick up the lift stations. Sometimes they charge us significantly more if we have more trash around our bins. A lot of the times, we have people dump household waste at our parks and our trash is overflowing, so we get extra charges for that. But I can't, I can't speak to the exact why it's increased so much from those previous.
Yeah, that, that, that might account for the difference in costs between eighteen and nineteen, but not for the current costs, so. Okay, that's.
So it sounds to me like this is an opportunity for some bids.
Just some additional analysis, so we can get back to city council on it.
Thank you, appreciate it. Page sixteen, well, back on fifteen, the buildings, everybody knows why that went up. It's the capital outlay for the cultural center fire suppression system.
Yeah.
Page sixteen, any?
Yeah, travel and training, what's, what's the two thousand dollars for?
IT. Do you have anybody from IT for the?
That one makes sense to me, cause it changes so quickly.
Yeah, these are certifications for network certifications and network analysis, or ne- uh, network admins certifications. For our IT personnel. We're moving for the new servers, they need to be certified on the new servers and the new systems in place.
And can we assume that this two thousand is a carryover from this year as well, correct?
Looks like it.
That's correct.
Page seventeen. This is, I have something here, I know I asked this question offline, but the PPACG dues have raised. But there's no difference in the line item fifty eight fifty.
There had already been an up, Emily had already made a change to it before you had brought it to our attention, so she had already made a change that compensated for that increase. Mayor Carr.
But the number is the same for twenty twenty and twenty one.
Right, because we're not part of Action Twenty Two, I believe is the name, was the name of it, any longer. So that's where that was absorbed.
But you get my point, there's two different numbers, I sit on the board there, and there is no difference in these two numbers.
Well, to end, maybe for further clarification, mayor, the membership dues includes. Colorado Municipal League, Pike's Peak Area Council of Governments, or PPACG, as you mentioned, and the Employers Council as well. And it used to include Action Twenty Two, which we're not a member of that anymore. So then that difference is made up by the increase in PPACG fees.
So it's a roundoff thing, okay.
It is, there's, there's maybe, I mean, we can't, we, we don't have the new changes for all those memberships. So we have, there's a small buffer about, I think it was a hundred and forty dollars or something like that, Emily, in, until we get our, our updates on the other memberships.
Close enough, in other words.
Correct.
Thank you. Page seventeen, oh, Kelly, go ahead.
The visitor's center contract, I have a question, because. The number for the budget, I mean, for projections for year end twenty twenty and the number for twenty twenty one. I know that there was a credit given, and that amount was reduced by over eight thousand dollars. That the, the chamber forgave in order for us to do the electronic sign at the cultural center. This is still showing an expense of forty two eight hundred, when we actually only spent. Thirty four two fifty five. I'm wondering why that is grossed up at that level? And that that expense is not classified property as a capital expenditure to be capitalized and depreciate, or on the list of capital assets.
We can look at that and try to make sure it's accounted for correctly.
And I think that, that that's happened in previous years as well for other reductions in that contract based on negotiations. I'd like to see that corrected to reflect the actual amount that was paid out to the chamber, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
Page eighteen. Page nineteen.
Question on eighteen, one hundred two two one thirty seven hundred, the IT services. We've got the thirty four thousand, when do we expect that to basically start going or approaching zero? Since we've brought in the servers, we paid for all those servers coming in-house, we've got the additional expertise. When, when do we expect to start seeing the savings from in-housing versus outsourcing?
That's a good question, so what you see at the, in line item one hundred one twenty seven five twenty is the, is the first year, is the savings that we will net. Next year, and that goes into technology and equipment, so that's, that, that's, that is for, you see line item is for the fiber build-out. So that the money that's saved will, is intended to be actually reinvested into the fiber. The savings you do, so you're, we expect fifty thousand in twenty twenty one. Because the, the contract doesn't expire until the end of April for those services.
Which line was that again, or which? No, 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 I mean, the.
It would come out of thirty seven hundred, and it's reintroduced as a, as a, in the seventy five twenty, does that make sense? Rusty and Mr., or Councilmember Path, sorry.
I don't have a seventy five twenty, I don't either.
Seventy five twenties at the end, near capital outlay of the page, on page fifteen, sixteen, I'm sorry, page sixteen. Seventy five twenty is the last, it's under capital outlay, it's, it's identified as fifty thousand. And then if you look up at the, up at thirty seven hundred, under informational technology services. It goes from a hundred and twenty nine thousand down to seventy nine thousand, that fifty thousand dollar savings is reintroduced as a reinvestment into fiber.
Okay, you, okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, we were on the police operations.
I'm sorry, so I was in the wrong pa- which page are you looking at again?
We were on eighteen, which is.
Eighteen, might be similar.
And thirty five hundred, or thirty seven hundred.
Flex it in the IT on page sixteen, you've got the correct number, the seventy five twenty, Darren.
Okay.
You can see it going from the one thirty five, a hundred thirty five thousand down to fifty thousand over there. And then the, on page eighteen, the seventy five ten, where we have the technology equipment going down to zero. On the police side of the house.
Yeah, there's a lot of interconnection in this, I'm, I'm closer to this than most. Darren and I have had long conversations about this, cause in my wheelhouse, but there, there's a lot of interconnection here.
Yeah, I had a conversation offline with Darren. Yeah, I had a conversation offline with Darren.
Okay. So I have I have a comment on this. The I don't see where the there's a breakout and maybe it's all incorporated in the operations. But for the dispatch center, is there a way of identifying the cost that costs us for a dispatch center and to show that in the budget? And the reason I'm asking that is because there is talk with Teller County and the Fire Department about doing a shared dispatch and it would be helpful if we can track that number this year.
There was analysis, you missed it last year, but a lot of analysis was done. We actually asked Teller County to participate in in something and they didn't. They decided to build their million-dollar facility with this new dispatch center instead of combining them, combining it with ours. I think Miles can talk about it. So this was a concern of ours a few years ago. And they no one wanted to cooperate with the city to reduce the cost and not expend as much money on that new facility over at Teller County.
So I'm aware that people are going around and having offline conversations about combining the comm centers. We did our due diligence, we looked into this and we did a presentation to council probably a year or two ago. And some of these combined centers have been an absolute disaster. Having control over your community, your own communication center and the quality of the employees as well as as the services is something that you have right now. And so if we want to be billed as just a client of another organization, that's an option that we can do. But right now I've got thirty-three employees underneath this budget, eight of them are dispatchers. We receive a two hundred thousand dollar stipend each year to help offset the expense of these dispatchers. So there was quite an analysis. I'm not sure. I think Mayor Carr was part of that conversation, maybe Councilmember Case was part of that as well. But there is a presentation, we can come back and revisit this. But I realize that there's conversations going on behind closed doors on combining comm centers that don't include me. And so I would be more than happy to sit down with you and and visit on that.
Fabulous. Great. And and so my comment or request on this is that because it is an ongoing discussion that we can look at itemizing it, what the comm center looks like in your budget here. So we have a reference point. It would be helpful. I think it'd be helpful for either solidifying your position or figuring out a way to make that something that works for our whole region.
Well, I think I think Miles can talk about this. The the analysis goes at far more depth than itemizing. And the transition from one PSAP to another is very complicated. So you'd be you'd do yourself a much bigger favor by actually looking at the analysis that's been done than than just do it looking at straight numbers because the transition, you have to look at attrition. There's a lot of things. I don't want to speak for Miles, but there was a lot of analysis that was done last year on this issue. I don't know that just doing a line by line. In fact, it was me who actually brought up the discussion in the first place with Teller County when they refused to actually combine the the PSAPs and and continue to build their their current one that that's there today. So I'm not surprised this still comes up. Miles and I have had this discussion multiple times. Miles, if you want to continue, I let we we have to rehash this every year.
Well, I guess my only comment is is I wasn't aware that this was an ongoing discussion. I thought this had been laid to bed. We can revisit it again, but if it is an ongoing discussion, I'm kind of amazed I'm not part of the discussion until right now. So.
Does does the analysis include the operational aspects? And this is my military background and just screaming at me right now. I know the difference between direct support and general support. So does this analysis talk the operational implications of what happens when you push your comms, your communication and coordination assets back to general support over direct support?
There's a number of issues. We actually had a contract that had Tri-Tech. We actually had Tri-Tech do a study on this and there was an additional study. I think the cost of doing another study on this would be a couple hundred thousand dollars is what we looked at. So but there's a number of issues that I can't flesh out in off-the-cuff five-minute presentation to you. But we can definitely pull that data up and and move forward. But again, if this was still an ongoing conversation, I find it disheartening that I'm not part of it.
Yeah, and because, I mean, I think people still talk about it, but I are you hearing, Robert, of actual, like official conversation, not people talking?
I don't think so.
Yeah, well, um. Because I thought after they started building the building out there, it was kind of done.
Well, when it gets finished, though, that's where dispatch will happen from the from the county. And so there is discussion with Fire Department and Teller.
Basically, Teller County people are talking about this.
And the Fire Department.
Well, I recall we got a massive report out of this. I still think I have it someplace. I'd be happy to share it with any of the new people who want to look at it. You probably have it too.
I have access to it. I guess my best resource would be my dispatch supervisor who's been doing this for a very long time, understands the nuts and bolts behind this. And at the end of the day, if you want to become a vendor, that's what you would be. And I don't think that's in the best interest of our community.
Yeah, and I might encourage that if there is discussion from folks in the county about these sorts of things that if they're talking to us in council, that we quickly tell them, well, talk to Miles and then we'll consider. I I just think that there's not, there can be enough rancor between two government jurisdictions as there is just naturally. This that that's, that seems amazing to me and I think it's very disruptive if there's somebody making suggestions that we not tell them, you need to bring Miles into it. That could be really problematic down the road if it's not cut off.
Well, I haven't seen the analysis and I think it's a valid point of of establishing a baseline of of what it costs us to run our to run our dispatch and reflected in the budget. And that's my only, that's my only comment here. I would like to see the analysis and those discussions are, people are interested in it.
So I I would suggest per a wonderful suggestion of my right here that we put that into an executive session at some point down the road if we're going to actually proceed with discussing that.
And I just wanted to caution, the report given to the council back then was in executive session. So I would just caution that those conversations, we should be really careful about what we say here this evening.
That's true. Thank you for reminding me.
Yeah, if if that's the case, if you could share it under the the cautionary labels that Jason, you always send out so that we can read.
I I will defer to the city attorney.
That's why I'm looking at them.
Miles and I can work together to figure out where we're at and how to get you the information you need.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Page eighteen, I wanted to make note that down under capital outlay is one of these twenty twenty-one projects, which is the police HVAC upgrade. They're they're looking forward to that. And so that's why that expenditure is a little bit higher. Any other questions on eighteen or nineteen? Thank you, Miles. Appreciate it. Page twenty. Hearing none. Page twenty-one.
Twenty-one, again, the travel. How many how many people do we have going to all the the training that's all been deferred? Because if I look across a lot of the funds, Kip, that you manage, I see a lot of travel that is out of alignment with the previous twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen. Understanding twenty twenty, how many people have we deferred their training?
So there's three fleet mechanics currently. We've only been operating with two for the last year. I'm anticipating hiring that third one in twenty twenty-one. And our fleet mechanic crew chief will be departing us before long. You guys saw Mr. Mackel with his twenty-five-year plaque or celebration just a couple meetings ago. So there's three, so that's about four hundred apiece to get their small, I should say, light and heavy vehicle trainings, keeping up with current technology is probably the biggest thing as we get new equipment. The technology on that equipment is incredible, so it's always a challenge for them to stay up to speed.
So we should see when we come back here for the twenty twenty-two budget, that the travel expenses should start becoming more in line with the historical precedence from twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen.
All depends on who we hire. Once Mark leaves, there's a great deal of knowledge that exits with him and whoever we hire, we're going to need to get them up to speed even faster.
Another thing I know as far as budget, we budget, you know, for intended expenses. So again, this is, you know, the best planning document that you have or most important. So, um, you know, you want to budget, you don't want to under-budget. And then we have to be coming back and saying, oops, we under-budgeted a bunch of things. It's always better, you know, to budget your revenues more conservatively and maybe have an extra cushion then for your expenditures so that, you know, you're 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 able to cover everything.
Let me give you a the commercial side response because I've spent twenty-six years on the government side. Government side, your logic is exactly what I watched for twenty-six years. On the commercial side, they'd say, no, we're going to decrease the amount that's budgeted. When you need more, come back and justify it.
That that's that works, Rusty, unless you want to do budget amendments every every month that we that you have and you waste your time doing budget amendments rather than the business of the, you know, normal business for the city. So we're trying to, we put a small buffer in there. It's not great, but that there is, there there are buffers that are in budgets. I will tell you, this year is not one of them. As you can see, other other line items within this budget have been reduced in order to have a a flat budget. You can see previous year budget two nineteen seven hundred, this year two eighteen. So you may see an increase in training because Kip finds that, you know, investing our employees, which are the the basically the bedrock of services for the city, was his hot, one of his higher priorities. And then you have a reduction in other areas to to achieve a flat budget. And as you you come from the military, you know, there's probably nothing more important in the military than than training and investing in your employees.
And I do respect your your observation. I did see a lot of the lines where you did sharpen the pencil and I hope all the council members did see a lot of the numbers did come down where appropriate. It was just I saw consistently across the entire budget, the training and travel budgets seem to be just almost too conveniently the same as last year, and that's why I'm challenging it. But yes, I I think you are correct. You did a very good job of looking at all the other lines and reducing them. I saw those.
I might add to that. I mean, I agree with Rusty wholeheartedly and I'm willing to have amendments come before me on that airing on that side. And on the other, where at the end of the year becomes difficult to account for it, it becomes hard sometimes to roll over money into the next budget that was already budgeted beforehand. That becomes a cumbersome task too, and I I think we account for it better when we're doing amendments, understanding that, you know, we can't get it perfect here, but if we err on amendments, we're tracking this stuff better through the year than when we're trying to pull it together at budget time. So anyway, and and trying to be fiscally responsible. So I'm with Rusty on that.
Thank you. I I will note that we we're being optimistic about full non-COVID situation. But a lot of this training, as we all know, has been been Zoomed, so some of this can be done via Zoom. I think we're we're being hopeful in some of these training numbers that were back to normal, whatever that used to mean. And but acknowledging that we're probably going to have a lot of Zoom training. I'm going to need a new webcam pretty soon with all this stuff.
Well, let me, let me, let me just say, Mayor, that you'll find the most administrative departments actually did have a reduction in in travel and training. You you will see that if you look at the line items. It's more of the departments that actually are out working and on the streets and, you know, like fleet and, you know, PD, all them. Those those departments have, you know, they've been working, they're the essential employees for, you know, our city and they they're out there regardless of COVID or not. They need that, like Miles just did this last week, that crisis intervention training, those types of trainings that help mitigate liability to the city and actually reduce some of our property and liability insurance over time. So it it just depends on where you're looking. You're seeing increases in the key departments that really provide public safety and infrastructure for our community. But you look at the other administrative departments, you'll see reductions in travel and training as a key offset for those health insurance increases.
Darren, I'll go back and take a look because I do recall the other departments were the ones that I did see a lot of savings. And you're right, Kip, a lot of it is in your area where they seem to be constant. So I'll I'll go back and take a look and see if what Darren just said makes sense.
Well, a lot of it's hands-on training that you can't do any, you can't do it by Zoom.
Yeah.
There's a lot of those of the employees that have certifications and licenses that require ongoing training and updates and upgrading. And so I would I would say that a lot of this, just from experience, is keeping those people where they need to be to do their jobs. And and keeping them there also helps, you know, if we have turnover, then we have to start over again, similar to what's been described in Buildings and Grounds and and in our fleet, Mark leaving. So just not to justify it, just to give a little more insight.
Yeah, it's an observation that I may have overlooked because I did notice some of the departments going down, which was, you know, we were trying for the flat budget. I saw an intentional desire where they were trying to reduce things here and there. I just noticed that, Kip, you had quite a few that were the same, so I'll try to keep that in mind.
Well, and by the way, I was going to say I needed to defer to Kelly because I had already said something. But, you know, I think everyone up here understands those critical trainings that where real certifications are absolutely necessary. I I would submit on things like fleet training, that ASE certifications certainly provide a stream of information that is useful for fleet maintenance. But then on the other side of something like that, experience can get the job done, especially when we're not constantly purchasing vehicles that are radically different than others. If we go into a new vehicle stream, obviously, and, you know, or if we add, for example, road maintenance, new road maintenance equipment like we've talked about and things like that. Obviously, there's there's some need there for mechanics to understand, especially when they may not have worked with that type of equipment at all, but we're not hiring new people. I get that. But, you know, ASE certification is more useful if they want to go work somewhere else than here because of their ability to be hired. And we may want to do that, but it's still somewhat more discretionary than in Miles' department where a lot of this stuff is liability mitigation and real necessary certifications to to meet law, law, legal requirements. So, you know, as we get pinched like this and we still don't know what next year is going to be like yet, I think sharpening the pencil on training is quite helpful, recognizing that we we want our employees to be able to feel they're advancing too, which some certifications can do. But sometimes we just gotta be care, and this this amounts to tens of thousands of dollars over all departments in the long run. So anyway, I think everyone agrees, the minimum certification stuff, you know, we need to be responsible and reliable to liability mitigation. We do. But beyond that, I think we got to be sharpening the pencil. And I agree with Rusty, I've seen some of that sharpening, but I think we still got to question it as a council at every level.
So you wanted to say something? Go ahead.
I just, I welcome the challenging. I will say, when we have to send up a piece of equipment down because we can't fix it, it's costly. Yeah. A hundred and seventy-five an hour or so, so it's, it grind my teeth.
No, and I and I'm, I think I've made that distinction clear and I think we all agree with that, but.
One of the things that I've also recommended for the Public Works Department is is winter maintenance training. And, you know, I've been looking for for, they've they've not been able to do that training for years. And this is about snow plowing and the proper application of treatments for the roads during the winter as well. So some of this training is related to that and making sure that our, that because, as you know, Kip, you know, with Parks, Buildings and Grounds, with Streets, even Fleet, they they. With streets, even fleet, that they participate in the plowing, uh, all of them jump in and are a part of that. And it's important that they're trained, um, on these types of, uh, these types of treatments and, and, uh, and these types of maintenance.
And, and by the way, I was using the fleet as an example.
I followed you completely.
ASE certifications. Are helpful, but not necessary. But real training in real circumstances obviously is necessary. So I was just using it as an example. I totally understand the distinctions there. So anyway, that's the point I'm making because that is one department where you've got some optional stuff, i.e. ASE. I mean, not that it doesn't provide extra.
Right.
Knowledge. It provides fantastic extra knowledge, but it's mostly a, uh, feel-good certification. That helps people recognize that you've advanced, but it's not practical in nature and, and I'm, I'm leaning towards practical. But yeah, what you do on the streets, which also can include some state regulations and stuff like that is all helpful. Anyway, I was using an example. We, we got other departments where it's more obvious than that one.
So, uh, we're at, we're at what would normally be a break, but I want to finish up the general fund. So there's two more pages. So I'm going to go to 22. See if there's any questions on 22.
I just have one, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, go ahead.
I, I hesitate to bring it up, but, because it involves training. The, uh, the CDL requirement, uh, is going to go be, uh, very, it's going to be very difficult to get training. Uh, we can't train in-house anymore. Coming up, I believe it's in February. And to get some other CDL certification is around $5,000 because you have to send them to a class. I only have 1,500 in the line item for travel and tr- or for training in the streets fund on 22. I'm hopeful our staff stays. If they don't, that will be coming to you to increase that because it's, we just can't do it in-house.
It's supplemental. Yep, understand. Thanks, sir. Appreciate it. Um, I had an interesting note on page 22 of note. It says 5650, traffic control services went way down from the 2020.
So that is in regards to the Midwest barricade that we would contract with for the parades in town. Um, typically we spent around eight to $10,000 just contracting that service out. They have refused to come up and work and we can't get anybody else to bid on it. So we have purchased our own signage and we'll be paying overtime to do that, but we'll be doing it in-house. And so we won't be using that contract anymore. So that's why that cost is down.
And thus the, uh, okay, yep. Good. Anybody else on page 22? Page 23. These are debt service transfers. Anybody, anybody going once, going twice. All right. We're going to break for 10 minutes. And take a rest, if you will. We'll come back on page 24 with the grants fund. If that's okay with council. Well, we usually, we usually do. Oh, there you go. All right, we're going to reconvene here and, um, we'll start out with the grants fund, which is on page 24. And, uh, Kelly Case claims she's going to drag this out till 11:30 tonight. Just kidding.
You're, you're on mute.
In the grants fund, it should, um, at some point approach zero for a fund balance. And I see a growing fund balance in the grants fund. I'm as curious as to why. What is outstanding that, that, uh, has not been expended? I'm just wondering why we're not approaching zero. Because we should be accruing expenses to match the grant year. Unless there's multi-year and, but it seems like we would be going the other way. Just wondering why we aren't at zero or at least looking at getting there. Yeah?
I, I would have to ask Erica, who's our victim's advocate? Um, because I don't know exactly why certain, you know, things weren't expended. And then that's just, you know, for 2019. That fun bound, you know, that audited fund balance is what we ended up with.
Right. But then we.
I believe, I believe one reason might be because of a part-time employee that. There was a transition there and that might, may not, that position may not have been filled. Um.
We've received revenue for it. We've got more revenue than we have expenses over time.
You, you are correct. Um, one of the reasons is, is her, she has two grants, the Vail Grant and the Volca Grant.
Right.
Vail Grant is once a year, Volca is two years. So you're seeing two years worth of, uh, money and, uh, that could be part of the reason.
Are you getting it advanced?
Correct. Yes.
Then you, then you submit the expenses and spend it down. Okay.
Yes, ma'am. It's for, it's, it comes the part-time victim advocate.
Okay, thanks.
So we should see that 34,585. At the end of the grants fund balance this year, go down much closer to zero next year is what you're saying.
Correct. And then she'll renew it.
Okay, thank you.
Every two years, but she's, um, going through some, some challenges right now with her state grant. So.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kelly.
Page 25. There's some explanation there, I think.
Yeah.
26. Hearing, seeing none, 27.
Just an extension of it.
Um, I'm going to, well, I guess we can discuss page 28. DDA.
Are we on DDA?
We are on DDA.
Can we wait till 20?
Well, I'll wait till 20.
29, the details.
30.
29.
30.
You know what I'm going to say, don't you?
I don't know.
Well, um, one of the themes, uh, with our, this council, and we've talked about it at length, is debt reduction and early retirement of debt. We've been working really diligently and talk about it a lot with regards to the general fund. And I would suggest that that, um, theme and that action plan should carry into the DDA fund. And I have a proposal, because I, I said this last budget year and maybe even the one before. Um, I would like to see the discretionary expenses in the DDA be put to zero. And those would be, um, beautification, professional services, legal services, information technology, advertising, legal notices, travel training. And supplies and the woodland station improvements totaling $75,250. And if you look at the debt service schedules on page 69. We can save some significant. You can see what, where principal can be reduced. And, and I would, I would first look to, um, the. Series 2012 and series 2018, which the series 2018 revenue refunding bonds, uh, have an interest rate of 4.74%. And they're $50,000 payments per year. And you can see, we can save some interest. And accomplish the same goal that we are working so good to and diligently on in the general fund. In reducing the debt in the DDA fund as well. Um, I think that this council would be wise to, uh, practice the same diligence and debt reduction. In this fund as well as the general fund. So I would propose that if there were to be a development actually material, materialize. And that there were a need for some expenditure of, of some of these nature, this nature. That they could come to the council for an appropriation for that. Mr. Pfaff even mentioned that he's not opposed to receiving, um, supplemental requests. As a council member and, and, um, I would suggest that that would be, uh, a way for us to accomplish that goal with the DDA as well. The rest of these items and the expenses are obligations by contract or by debt indentures. And, um, the county treasurer fee obviously is the fee that's paid for them to collect our property taxes, both in the general fund and the TIF. Um, and then we can retire this debt earlier. And in the long run, I suggest that. Then we could get rid of this debt and maybe the revenues go back to the taxing authorities. And maybe as a coalition, all of them and the city could work together and maybe ultimately one day. Accomplish that mill levy reduction. And maybe not just the city, but maybe we could collaborate with the other authorities. And maybe even affect a larger relief to our businesses and our citizens in the long run. So that's my proposal for the DDA and, uh, I'll leave that with you all.
So I'm, I'm unaware of what our, uh, ability to do those things is frankly, I don't, I don't have a knowledge of that. Uh, so I, I, it's an interesting proposition.
We have, we have the authority to appropriate spending.
I, I might, I might just want to pitch in here and say, I, I agree with everything that Kelly's saying. I mean, my whole, uh, I, I'd get rid of the DDA today if I could.
As would I.
I think the, um, I think the woodland station property, since there is a, a development proposal there, I think is useful. To try to work through, because this is actually maybe the most serious one, or close to the most serious one that's, that's been there. or close to the most serious one that's, that's been there. I think that original one just got messed up and I think poorly handled. But this, this one, these, you know, someone's moving into town, they're serious about it and could fall apart. I mean, anything can, but the only mild adjustment to your suggestion, Kelly, that I would say is if this deal goes through, there's gonna be a need for legal services.
Absolutely.
So I think, I would still accept what you're saying one hundred percent. But with the one mild caveat that I think that the, and it'll show what the sincerity of the deal is, is that the DDA should come to us with a proposed legal services budget based upon current circumstance. And then we add that back in if we feel it's reasonable. I, I would like to see them go through that process. And I do agree with you that the TIF money needs to get rolled back in to the taxing authority and used specifically for debt reduction, once we can get this thing finalized. I think that, that anything we do and say too, I think we wanna be cautious not to make the deal fall through precipitously on our part. Could fall through precipitously for any other reason, but I don't want it to happen on our part. But I, I, I agree. And my understanding is that we do have the authority to budget these items that we're not obligated to. But I guess Val was going to lean towards the city attorney on that.
Yeah, Val, if you could.
Somebody else, the knee, who's.
Confirm with the, if you go through the documents, I've gone through the documents and read them all. I do think we have that authority, so I.
We do.
I endorse what you're proposing with Jim's modification for the legal services, because we do want them to have that cash budgeted to make sure this goes through this.
But again, if we make them run to us with a proposal while we're in the middle of the budget process, I think it helps everybody clear, clearly see what's going on.
So if you don't mind, let me understand that a little better. And what I, what I suggested was that if they did have something come forward and they had a need for some appropriation for such expenses that would be linked to the development, that they, we then could do an appropriation at that time to provide that funding. And I would not, I would not say no to that at all.
Sure.
If there's a serious development coming forward and that it's been presented to us and we've accepted that, then I agree with you wholeheartedly, if that's what you're saying.
Oh, the thing is, I'm, I agree with you, but the caveat is, I want them to do some due diligence right now. I wanna see what's going on. So I don't foreclose yet the idea of in this budget, funding the legal services. But their due diligence may show us that, yeah, you come back with the appropriation. So I, I would like to see that process.
I would agree.
And that's what I'm proposing and why I'm proposing it. Otherwise, I, I a hundred percent agree. I, I think, I think we're all getting some input on this in various means and at various times. And we know that something is moving forward and it does look at least somewhat promising, if not very promising. And I just wanna get the freaking land off of our backs. Let's move and move on to the next stage. And this should never have, this whole DDA thing should never have happened to begin with. It was a workaround the people. I think Kelly and I agree on that as a way to, to give favorable benefits to people, not all of which have necessarily been net-net wrong or unhelpful. But it's just, it's the wrong process. We gotta shut it down as quickly as possible.
Absolutely. And the only way we can do that is to get the debt paid.
And that's why I wanna do, get some due diligence out of this. So I don't wanna foreclose the expenditure yet. I wanna see precise due diligence. And we may still agree, no matter what they give, that it, they, they aren't clear enough yet, which will tell us a certain things. And then I'm perfectly fine with you to just shut off the expense and have the appropriation come back. I just want the due diligence done.
I, I, I can support that completely. Thank you.
So as far as an action item, trying to make sure we understand what it is you're expecting. Are you wanting a written report or presentation by the DDA? Assuming it's gonna be a part of this budget cycle.
I think it would be useful to have, have a presentation and, and talk about these things with them, you know, if we, if we take thirty thousand and they only need two thousand, for instance, to Kelly's point on the, sorry, what's my cut eye here? The woodland station improvement sort of thing. So I don't, I don't know that we have really good guidance. I'm a little uncomfortable without further information myself.
Yeah.
But I, I recognize it's a valid discussion, so.
I would ask that if they do do a presentation, that I would like it not to just be the board. I would like to have a presentation from the developer to the city council.
Yeah, I'd like to be able to question, ask some questions of the developer myself.
That's particular developers you're talking about, just, cause we.
Whomever is, is engaging with them and has a proposal on the table.
At least for a Q and A.
So I, I'd like to weigh in on this as the liaison with.
Yes, please, please.
So the DDA, from what I understand, and I don't wanna speak for those on the board, but I do have a sense that they are aware that they would like to wind down the DDA. And there is a cost to do that. And so I think what we would be beneficial to everybody is to say, okay, let's look at what it's gonna take for all of us to work this out, to finalize the, the property we have and move forward. And what's it gonna take to retire the debt and all the pieces? And what's the most collaborative way to do that in the quickest period of time? So I think that rather than us come across to say, okay, we're cutting your, your funding or how you run your operation, how you're running it. I think what we need to have is a, a discussion and a plan. Give them the opportunity to say, okay, it looks like it's gonna take X amount of time to retire this and it's gonna take X amount of time to develop this project that's going on right now. And whatever it takes to streamline that process, but do it together rather than try to dictate what, what we wanna go with that.
Well, so let me, let me just, if you go line by line here, what Kelly's recommending, beautification, I mean, if there's some urgent need, we can appropriate that. I don't know what that would be.
Well, I'll tell you what it was this year. I'll just, I'll tell you what it was this year. It was cleaning, the pressure washing the businesses downtown, because the city is unable to pressure wash the businesses because of a liability issue.
Perfect. We can, we can cut that line on him then, in my opinion. I think Kelly would agree with me. Professional services, you know, if there's some urgent, urgent need, come back and tell us. Legal services, we just discussed. Information technology is a minimal expense anyway. If it's really that bad and they gotta spend three hundred and fifty dollars, ask us. I think all of us probably expend a little bit of money on our own to do what we do in city council.
Yes, sir.
There are people there capable of helping. Maybe they can do that, but certainly we could talk about it. Advertising and legal notices, there could be some requirements there, but the budget item is so small. If it's really bad and we've got a real need that Colorado state law requires them to do a legal notice, we can, we can approve that.
Sure.
Funding. Training and travel unnecessary entirely, in my opinion. Supplies, pitch in, we pitch in on our own. You know, and woodland station improvements, to be candid, there, there's probably gonna be a budget need for that in the future, but there is no absolute need for that right now. I think we're right where we need to be with it. And, and where the city's responsible for the bathrooms, for example, we've got that budgeted elsewhere. So those kinds of things.
Plus, if there's going to be potential development there, maybe that's money that might be wasted.
Right.
Right? We need to let them say what the property's gonna look like.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, it, it follows under legal services, but it's a more strict requirement in my mind, because it's entirely tied to a deal. Period. I see no other improvement necessary.
So with, 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 if, unless there's objections, I, I think staff needs direction. I would, I would ask that we get a presentation. Is that, is that where you were gonna go?
Yeah, so a couple of things. As far as meeting with the developer, I guess it would be my recommendation at this point. That wouldn't be our business yet.
Yeah.
Because that's up to them to finish the negotiations. Ultimately, that will come to council if it comes to fruition for your, your buy-in and everything. I, I just don't know where they're at in the process, but it may complicate the issue for multiple authorities to.
It has a quasi-judicial nature to it as well, does it not, or some, or at least similarly?
Yeah. But, so rest assured, before anything can happen there, council has to be involved in that process. And then the second piece, I think probably what you're looking for and what we're missing, you know, all of the staff department members, department heads provided you memos as to why our budget is what it is and all of its impacts. And that's the piece that we're missing here. And so whether that comes in a, a presentation with a combination of a memo or something for you for a future presentation, we'll look at probably getting that scheduled as soon as possible, seeing how far into the budget process we are. So you have the information to understand.
Yeah, I would, I would prefer a report to start with, cause we can all read.
I agree.
And.
And I don't think that we need an official presentation. I would prefer to have some kind of narrative that describes the process, where they're at with the developer, how, what kind of, and how close they are. Because I know from our monthly report from the planning department, they have received nothing to date. And so if that is not happening, then that tells me that they're really not very far along and still negotiating very hard. And I don't mean this in a negative connotation. If our planning department is not involved and is not engaging in that development, then that tells me that it's still very conceptual. So that's the kind of information that would be helpful for me.
You wanna go first?
Just, just a brief.
Anyway.
So, so the beautification is one of those things that we're gonna absorb with the vendor fees contract. So that probably minus a few bucks here and there, whatever that might be, will actually go away anyway.
It's fourteen thousand. That's a lot of money.
So, but I, I think those are some of the issues we're dealing with this vendor fee contract. So, so there you go. But yeah, if we can get a report, that would be great. We can read that. Rusty, go ahead.
I'm not sure if my request is OBE. I thought the planning department had to have been involved with where they are at this point, because the one thing I would like to have is the planning department's opinion. Do they think this is going to be financially viable, what's been presented? Cause I'm, I am less inclined to, you know, appropriate money for something that may be financially not viable. And it's how you use the land. Sadly, I did read the book that the planning department gave and I, a lot of aha lights went on in terms of how to develop land at, for a city. And I saw a couple of things on the preliminary renderings that were made possible when Mr. Williams and Mr. Christensen came and threw them up on the slides. I had some real worries that it would not be financially viable. So I would like to see an opinion start to formulate, is this plan viable?
Well, I, I wanna, personally, I, I don't have, I have no interest in the planning department letting us know if it's financially viable. This is a government institution. They have no ability to do that. The developer needs to figure out if it's financially viable.
Maybe I'm using the wrong word, Jim. I wanna know if it's gonna be, ha, have to be subsidized by the citizens, because the plan has put in buildings that will never generate revenue, that will, the tax, the new taxes will never cost, uh, cover the costs.
Well, if we're doing our budget correctly, then whatever extra taxes come in, we'll either go, hopefully we'll all go towards debt reduction and no expansion of city services, except where appropriate to the new facilities that are there. And if, if we're taxing them at a rate that doesn't cover the normal services we would give as a city, then that's, that's a problem, which I don't think we have, first of all. And secondly, the, 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 the only obstacle that the planning commission can help us figure out is, does it, will the development meet requirements, for example, I think this is the only one, of the, the, the drainage plane, whatever, I just, I lost the terminology, whether the whole Fountain Creek situation is met. Yeah, yeah. And so anyway, that's all I care. I don't want the planning commission doing a dang thing to help us understand if it's gonna work. The taxing situation, I mean, any extra revenue we get from something there, I, I will never vote for expanding services because we got extra revenue. I will vote only for debt reduction. I just, I think that that gets into future discussions that we don't need to worry about, to be candid, because I don't think we need to determine if it's financially viable for us, whatever they wanna build there. All I wanna know is that they wanna build it there, that they feel that it'll work for them. And if it doesn't, then we've got another discussion to have, which I know Kelly and I have had privately too. You know, we're, we're gonna, this is, in my mind, this is it. This is the one, if it doesn't work, we gotta have a very serious discussion about where we're going from here. And.
So what needs to happen with, what needs to happen with the planning department is, oh, it isn't just drainage, but it's also.
Oh, I know that.
Hold on.
Hey, go ahead.
I don't know what I'm gonna say yet.
Go ahead.
So is the, the rezoning of it, the parceling of it, it's like putting what it's gonna look like?
Right.
And so there's, that's what the next discussions and, and as far as I know, those were, they were scheduled last week and they've been, they've.
There is a process.
There's a, there is a process. They have to go through a process. And, and I think it's a sixty-day process to define that through, through the planning department. And that's just very procedural. It's not them telling them whether they're gonna make a profit on it or not. It's just totally, that's not even their jurisdiction.
Yeah, and, and that's what I'm saying. I, I may be using the wrong terms. There is maintenance costs to the city for the infrastructure that is covered by the taxes that the development will generate. I just.
In a perfect world.
In a perfect world, I would like to see how close our estimate of the taxes that will be generated, will it cover the city's long-term and perpetual infrastructure costs?
Well, unless we've got a screwed up tax structure, that, that seems a foregone conclusion to me. Certainly, we wanna see the calculations. One, two. As to zoning, listen, if this council's not willing to vote for a zoning plan that's gonna make this thing work.
Yeah, I'm not worried.
No, I know that. I'm, I'm addressing Robert's statement there.
Okay.
If we're not willing as a council to vote for a, whatever zoning plan is appropriate to make this work, then we might as well just stop this discussion now and have the next one. So, so that's just, to me, a foregone conclusion. There is a real issue at a state level and, and I think also at a federal level related to Fountain Creek situation that is a, a real hurdle that we wanna make sure is there. That's, in terms of the zoning and planning commission type work for that, that's the only one that I think is really up in the air, that I'm aware of, that's up in the air, unless there's some, there was a gas station there and we figure, find out suddenly and it's gotta, you know, or something like that.
It was.
But that, that still has the requirement for cleanup and what the cost is, if that, you know, those are the things. It's like, it's like those odd things. The rest of it is just, let's figure out if it's moving forward. If it is, then we'll go ahead and appropriate anything extra that's necessary for that. I, I wouldn't have a problem with that if it's a solid deal. Now that I hear that there are some meetings that the planning commission is at least attempting to schedule, then I think that somewhat addresses your issue, although not substantively.
Yeah.
So I, you know, I, it's, it's all encour, the most encouraging thing to me is we get the freaking thing developed and we get the freaking DDA closed. That's the biggest thing in my mind right now.
So I, I look at this, this is my personal opinion, but I, I, I wanna remind everybody, at least this is my view of things, that the DDA is one thing, woodland station is a different thing. And if we treat them differently, I mean, if it was up to me, I'd put the, I'd put a for sale sign on woodland station, get market value and be done with it.
Absolutely.
After having dealt with it for four bloody years here, bloody is not unintentional. But woodland station is a different thing than the DDA. And, and that's, this is my opinion only, but I think we need to always remind ourselves that there, there are two different things. And, and maybe neither one of them's attractive, but certainly I, I always wanna deal with them separately. City attorney, sounds like he has something to say.
So this is a budget meeting. This has been great discussion about the future of the DDA. But in terms of the budget, I think we've got our direction on how to move forward. And certainly, we can have further discussion at a later date as to the future of the DDA generally and what your expectations are, et cetera. But I wanna, we wanna stay on topic as best we can.
So.
And thank you to the council for entertaining that.
Yeah, and, and, and I just, I, with all due respect to the city attorney, I think that these interstices of discussion are helpful.
I agree.
For putting perspective on where we need to go and why we're gonna do this, because I think we need to solidify, and I think we have, need to solidify ourselves on what we're doing budget-wise here. And I appreciate Kelly for her, you know, willingness to consider what I'm saying regarding the legal aspect of it. I don't wanna unduly hamper, but I definitely wanna, unless it's solid right now, just come. but I definitely want to, unless it's solid right now, just come back to us later. So I think this is real helpful.
That's where I feel the same.
This may be, you know, one of those issues where we have such unanimity that we can aggressively push forward to good conclusions. And I think that that's helpful and useful for all of us.
Well, we don't want to do that then. That would ruin our reputation.
Mayor, if I could, you know, one of the traditional, we, we traditionally have the DDA come and present to city council during the budget year. Wasn't in this budget calendar.
So, uh, the city attorney made claim that we have direction. I would like it repeated back to me, just because I'm not sure we do. Uh, by you and Emily, if you wouldn't mind, Darren.
Uh, what I understand is you want a report, a written report from, from the, uh, DDA outlining, um, justification for those expenditures that you identified earlier. Um, do you want, and then do you want them at some point to come to city council to, um, answer any questions on that sometime between now and budget approval?
We're agreeing that all the line items that Kelly laid out are nixed, except for the legal services one. And if there's a need for any of these, then the budget request needs to be made.
I, I, I would, uh, I would say that we need clarification on everything on there.
I don't, but thank you.
Okay. What's? What's the consensus, I guess. I'm sorry.
Bring, bring more information than less, I guess is, would be my suggestion. We can bring information as to all of them. Ultimately, council can make the decision when it comes to actual passing the ordinance, what your expectations are to these dollar figures.
Well, I'm, I am loathe to leave this discussion without saying everything's nixed except the legal services item. But there may not be unanimity here on that. If we can't get that, then we can do the other, but.
I agree.
I agree. County Treasurer, we can't mess with that. Um, there's certain things.
I didn't bring that one up.
Yeah, that was not one of them.
No, it was, uh, twenty twenty-one, thirty-two hundred, thirty-two ten, thirty-seven hundred, fifty-four hundred, fifty-eight hundred, sixty-one hundred and seventy-four hundred.
Agreed.
Yeah. With, um, with.
With the legal service.
Thirty-two ten being upgraded.
On legal services.
Right.
Well, I mean, a hundred and fifty bucks for the information stuff is more than I pay for my home stuff. So, you know, we're talking about noise level.
Yeah.
And if, if they would like to just, to substantiate any of those in their report to us, I would not, I will read it and take it into consideration.
So, so that's why I suggested that we get a report on the whole thing and we can revisit the details.
Well, I think you have four council members saying to go to zero, with the exception of the legal, and get a report where we may want to put some money back in.
I think, for example, professional services, is there paid person who has to, uh, coordinate them? In fact, I think it's Emily's husband. I think that's what that fee is for his services. So, and there's legal requirements that, that the DD had, the DDA has to continue existing. So part of that, those things.
Part of that report then can state that.
It'll probably say that. That's all I know. I'm just saying.
You know, we're, we're looking at the legal, um, services part of it. We could also look at the, uh, professional services aspect too, in that report, but to start with is to zero them out.
Yeah.
Keep in mind that, um, I believe it was a hundred and sixty-five thousand, and I could be wrong, but it was somewhere in that nature of legal services that were paid. And that's part of the reason we have that five hundred thousand dollar debt at four point seven four percent.
Exactly.
Um, I think the way you last stated, unless someone else disagrees, the last way you stated it, Rusty, is good. They, they need to know, legal services we'll talk about, because you may have some real requirements there, but you got to tell us.
Yep.
And then you can throw in a couple of items. If they're, if they're here to defend every, every one of these little items, I'm not, I don't want to hear it. But if they want to talk about the professional services, we can consider that. I just think we need to set the marker here. I'm feeling very, uh, purposeful about this because it also helps encourage movement. Not that, I, I think they're being lazy about it. I think they are being aggressive about it, but I just to kind of put an urgency on this. I, I just, I feel very strongly about that, or else, or else we're going to get back into a morass again.
And I just, I just have seen some irresponsible spending, in my opinion, over time. And I'm interested in curbing that. And, and I think that we have the ability to do that. I think, I think that there needs to be, they need to be purposeful in, in what they're doing. And, and their purposefulness is in getting that development done. And, and, and just, you know, we've seen, the city has, has done some great things. And we've done some things that I don't think all of us are real comfortable with, with regards to relief with COVID. And, um, I would have been impressed had I seen some of that coming from here as well. So, um, I, I'm just, I'm, I'm just displeased with the, the action and the, the lack of purposefulness and the, and what in my opinion is wasteful spending. And I just would like to see that curbed. I'm off my soapbox now.
Yeah, and I'm going to say, I'm not sure it was wasteful. It's when we all ran on being fiscal conservatives. So we're sharpening the point a little bit sharper than we've ever sharpened it before. And I feel good about us doing that.
Yes.
So zeroing out, come back, come back for those two items or anything else would be the way I would go. Leaving the TIF reimbursement as mandatory, the county treasurer fee, uh, in the budget.
Well, we can't make decisions. This is a work session, so.
Right.
Uh, and.
We can have consensus.
You, it, your opinions are, are fine on this, but, um, I think that we want to be, uh, respectful to allow the DDA who are not slouch, in my opinion, they're not slouching on this at all. Uh, there's been some lot of bad water, uh, but it's under the bridge. And so I'd like us to collaborate to what it's going to take to have a successful conclusion and summation of the DDA. And that's going to require their input and not for us to just punitively say, we're sharpening the pencil. We don't know your books, but we're going to sharpen the pencil on them. I have a little bit of a problem with that.
You're very willing to do that in the general fund, I would remind you.
Well, the thing is that the DDA is a quasi-government organization which has the ability and has the responsibility, and as Jim has quite, um, clearly said, that we have done a workaround, the people to develop the DDA. Well, it's there. So now, let's give them the ability to finish the job that they're doing. And we do our job, which is to be conservative with that, which is our purview. They have a charter, they have a whole board, they have the, the ability to go through and, and deal well with what their stuff is. For us to come in and say, we're going to eighty-six you, uh, to me, isn't necessarily the best.
It was mainstream.
But, but Robert, I've sharpened the pencil throughout the entire document.
Well, I'm happy to move on. I'm just stating that I'm not coming to a conclusion. This isn't a vote. And, uh, it's been a fabulous discussion and, and I think that we can move forward with it.
Okay.
Page thirty. Culture and Recreation Fund.
We hope to have a better year in twenty twenty-one. We were making headway.
Page thirty-one.
Confirmation on my calculation, and this is for Emily, is with the numbers in front of us, does that give us a fifty-five point nine six percent cost recovery? Does that sound about right?
You're talking just the.
Talking about whole fund?
Aquatic Center. That's, I'm sorry, I was.
This is about sixty percent that they're subsidized by the general fund? Is that your question?
No, on the, the Aquatic Center, when I look at the revenue, the expenses, when I did the calculation, I came up with fifty-five point nine six percent cost recovery. Does that sound about right, based on your knowledge?
Revenue over expenditure.
Um, well, um, I had a slightly different calculation based on their, um, revenues and expenditures, so. But it does include, sorry, it does include the Conservation Trust Fund, so it's a little bit tricky. So I'd have to calculate that out, because my calculation earlier in the budget message, um, that I go over includes the, um, Conservation, uh, Trust Fund monies.
Yeah, we had that presentation. I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Mayor.
Well, we had that presentation where, where you laid that out, um, a couple of meetings ago.
Rusty, we'll, we'll confirm, get, get confirmation for you and get that number about the city council. Unfortunately, Cindy couldn't make it tonight, so she, she'd normally be able to answer that directly.
That's fine. That's, that's a better way of handling it. Thank you. Does everyone feel like we've gotten a good P and L for the Woodland Aquatic Center? I think we've gotten a lot of numbers. I just don't know that anything arrives at that. This doesn't provide that, obviously. It provides some top-line numbers, but that'd be helpful. Because I don't think we have in this part of it, I don't think we have in this part of it specifically, unless I'm missing something here, because I don't understand it as such, uh, specifically, uh, what we, uh, as a council are going to have to fund out to make up the differences in the Woodland Aquatics.
That's a transfer.
That's on page thirty.
So are you saying it's four hundred and sixty-five thousand for this year? Or five hundred?
For, for the whole fund. That.
Yeah, that's what I'm, I don't think we have broke, any of this broken out.
Um, on the, on, in the budget message on page, um, seven, Roman numeral seven, um, it goes through what's the subsidies are. So that's what I was referring to Councilman Neal's question about the, um, subsidy, because when you look at that, there's that breakdown on page seven in the budget message. It, like I said, it includes not only the general fund transfer in, but the transfer in from Conservation Trust Fund. Um, but you'll see, you know, you'll see that breakdown there as far as the expenditures and revenue.
It's three twenty-eight, one forty-eight, Jim. This is subsidy for the.
You have it up on the screen.
Roman, Roman numeral six.
Okay. Yes. Well, in answer to your question, I, I feel uncomfortable that, uh, a couple of weeks ago, I asked some specific, um, request for some data to help us really drill down on these numbers and to see if we are able to provide a more cost-effective service, um, and to get an, uh, evaluation of the, of the number of citizens who are using it, the specific usage and stuff. So I had about seven or eight questions. And I don't see here, we, we just have again another three hundred and, three hundred and thirty-two last year, three twenty-eight this year. I just would like us to seriously look at that and to cooperate with, uh, what they're doing. And I know they've really tried hard and COVID has kind of put a hamstring in some of the creative, uh, fund generations that they wanted to do. But I would really like us to drill down on this, uh, in a way that allows us to feel good as a community that we're providing, um, a fabulous service. And we've got a huge, uh, deficit that we, I mean, fifty percent is, is, um, recovery is, I get it. It's, it's across the board. Other people say that same, but we can do this different. We have an excellent aquatic center and we could create, uh, some other ways of running this so that we're not at hurting at the, at a cost of three hundred plus, thousand, uh, three hundred thousand plus a year. Uh, it was expected to be at a hundred. It's good that we're having a conservation fund offset that, but is it all seventy-five thousand going towards the aquatic center? Or are you divvying up that between, uh, the other?
Sorry? Sorry, what was that?
The seventy-five thousand that we're getting from the Conservation Fund, is that all going, uh, appropriated towards the Aquatic Center? Or is that being, uh, divvied up from the other parks and rec facilities?
Um, let me just double check. Yeah, it, right, in councilman cases, correct it. It just goes to the fund that I'm looking for.
I've got it up right now.
The detail, sorry, in the CTF.
I have it up right now. It's on the screen.
I can't see that. Sorry.
Conservation, so you have.
Okay.
Yeah. You pass Cultural Center, Fire Suppression, and then the other items are yes for, you'll see a lot of it goes to chemicals, um, electric custodial supplies and facility maintenance costs.
It's really for the WAC and the Cultural Center building improvements.
Yeah, I was going to say, it's two things. The seventy-five thousand is going toward.
And that's because those kinds of expenses, there's certain expenses that qualify for CTF funds.
Right.
So you can't, you can't use them for like personnel or.
Correct, correct.
Very strict about that. So.
Right.
Sticking with capital for the use of those funds is really, um, your best bet, because it's not questionable. So, anyway, just.
No, I, but I recognize there's an allocation there and that's, that's specific and, and that helps that offset for sure. Yeah, yeah. So my, so my question is, back to, uh, getting analytics and getting data so that we have, uh, better able to drill down on these numbers, because I'm not okay continually just shelling out that amount and at a loss every year, without really putting our heads together to, to get clear on what we're dealing with. And I don't think we've got, we haven't, the data has not been brought to us yet.
I'm good with it. Um, in my opinion, that's the job of the department manager, but I'm just, let's just.
Well, we have a fiscal responsibility to look at where we are spending money in the budget and to look if it's, uh, being done the most effective way possible. And many heads in this regard, uh, will bring a lot of peace of mind to a lot of people.
Robert, I agree with getting data. When I looked at your request, it, it was a lot more data than I was expecting to see requested. Could you send that out to us again? And then we could, maybe we could get a subset of it. You asked for quite a bit of data.
Well, we can talk about which ones are, will help us drill down on the numbers to get it to a point where we've got, I mean, for me, it's very obvious that if we look at the usage and we look at the staff we have and the time, how many people are there? Are we maximizing that usage? It's going to be a bell curve. And if we go to the middle of the bell curve, we're going to find efficiencies. And that's just basic, simple question, but we don't have the data to define what that looks like.
And you're, you, you summarized it like four bullets right there, but when I saw the list of, of what you were asking for, it was far more than just four pieces of information. Can, like I said, can you send it out and we can say, can we, you know, maybe drop this, this, and this off and concentrate on this so that it, I mean, information costs. I mean.
Yes, it does. It costs staff time. They're chasing their tails.
Well, that's okay.
For that, and, and.
To a degree, that's what we need as council.
Sure, to a point.
To a point.
Reasonableness.
I agree. So, um, I've been asking for a bunch of data for, uh, a couple of years. And, um, and, and mostly it's for me to, uh, help educate myself, to help, help educate the public. Um, I've been saying for years that, that three dollars per swim is really fifty or sixty or seventy bucks per swim. And it, it, you know, the, the public needs to know that. They need to understand that. But without the data, and that's a, that's a wag for sure. But, um, without the data to educate the public to make an understanding of what, how they're subsidizing it, those are the data points that I was interested in. In other words, not the, the visits, but the clients, uh, also. And so I think, I think there is some data we could get. We've, we've had some resistance to that because it's probably hard to get. And, uh, so we need to, we need to find out how hard it is to get, uh, to, my whole deal is, uh, I, I, I see them doing the best they can over there with what they've got to deal with. Uh, but I think the public needs to know that despite the fact that they're doing heroic things, uh, it, there is a real cost and, and the public has to know that, that they're, um, they're subsidizing it. And that means all eighty-two hundred people, not just the two hundred or five hundred.
We need to maintain a level of reasonableness.
Yeah, Val, Val.
And that's all I ask.
Well, your list was a lot shorter than Robert's. Maybe the, the two of you could convince on a list of data. Well, your list was a lot shorter than Robert's. Maybe the the two of you could convince on a list of data that's not quite as. Vol- voluminous and hard to collect, but but. At least hits the the points because I looked at both of your uh requests. I didn't say anything. I just thought. Robert, if we could get it pared down just a little bit, maybe working with Val.
I hate council to waste their time because quite honestly, you have a director who knows how to do staff optimization, exactly the things that we're talking about right now. Um she can certainly present those to you so you can have a better understanding of what she does does on a a daily basis, but. The expect the thought that she doesn't know how to do this or that she doesn't collect this data, uh it doesn't respect her her um skills as a as a director. I I would ask that you. That we just maybe have her present to.
I I don't think there was any imp to dis disparage uh the department at all. It was just uh our lack of knowledge. Uh I mean, I don't sit over there behind the desk and know what's available either.
Yeah, Darren, if she's got all of all of this stuff that Robert's asking for, then. Yeah, actually, I would, if it's there, let me.
Please.
Let me double.
I mean, I I sit down with her and we we talk about these these stop staff optimization models. It's something we looked at. We decided to reopen the the um the Woodland Aquatic Center during covid. To make sure that we were we were optimizing, you know, reducing experience, optimizing our expenditures for the number of. Uh personnel that we had on staff there. So I I I have no prob, I think she can present that to you. Um and you'd be, you would understand, you know, the efforts that she puts forward to try to find the best mix of. Of uh for her staff optimization models that she that she puts forth, so.
Well, I I want to double down on what Rusty just said and just make this statement. Most, in fact, the vast majority of what we're asking for here. If it isn't somewhat already available, makes me question. I mean, you can tell me that, yeah, and I believe you that she uh understands staff optimization, but if these numbers aren't readily available. Right now, then I I would question the overall uh operational. And organizational structure of it because it's with these numbers, these numbers that we're asking for helpful to us to. Communicate to the city and the citizens what's going on and why we're expending this extra money to make up the shortfalls, but. Um, you know, it it's. It it real, they're really substantive numbers that are necessary for any organization to run efficiently and effectively, so.
Yeah, Darren, if you've got them, I.
I feel more, I feel more, I feel more that the numbers are there. And and I feel regular resistance to getting them. And and so um I do understand that there's staff time involved with that, but there's so much of what we ask for on this basis. That if staff aren't already uh, you know, steeped in those numbers, then I I I wonder how efficiently we're doing things. That's just my personal opinion.
And just being consistent, if we're going to ask the DDA to put together a full report.
Yeah.
Because we want to sharpen our pencils.
That's right.
Well, and and the other, the other piece of that is if if we're missing tools that uh are not allowing them to do that, then we need to help them with that.
I just want to be consistent. What's good for what I ask of the DDA, it's it's what's good, we ask of the the aquatic center. If if the data's there, I I just was not aware that it was all there. We just haven't. Put it on.
Piece of paper.
With all due respect, Darren, um mere staff optimization. Uh statistics are just not enough to help us figure out what's going on here. And um and I think that there's a transparency and accountability issue, not only to. Uh this council, but also to uh the the citizens at large. We're expending huge amount of money on this, so.
Also, I I got, and some of the data that was requested, we don't, we don't, definitely don't collect. Like, we we don't charge a different charge for out of town, out of towners and in towners. So there's some things that were requested that. We just don't collect and I don't know that has an impact on unless we change the fee structure on the um. The balancing of our revenues and expenditures for for the aquatic center. But I I think Cindy can bring her staff optimization model to you that and you can look at that and ask us. If is there additional data that you feel as relevant, once you see that, that um would help. Um I will tell you that we did, we've met with a number of consultants over the last two years. Um to include the YMCA and and sought out um their opinions on ways that we can improve. The operations of the of the facility, uh because there's always been this level of pressure on optimizing and it should be there. I don't disagree. So uh just to know that this is something that is, you know, constant, consistent process improvement has been a mentality that's been a part of. The discussions with the aquatic center um since it's open, so uh there's just some. I think, I think um misaligned expectations uh from the get go with the initial report that didn't. Didn't see outcomes, you know, like from wage perspective, that the minimum wage was going to increase. Um each year for the first four years of the of the facilities opening and that chemicals weren't going to come in at the right, uh we don't get into details. We've talked about this at length. Um but absolutely, let us, let us bring you the. The staff optimization model with Cindy, and then if there's more information that you need, then we can have that discussion. I think that'll help, at least have a baseline.
Well, I I have a question. Are you capable? Before any specific request of this nature is made, are you capable at any given time on an annual and monthly basis? Able to print out a P and L that's somewhat auditable?
Uh Cindy does keep one at the at at the city at this, at the WAC level.
You don't do it specifically for the WAC?
No, it is. It's for the Woodland Aquatic Center.
So you can print out a P and L at any given time, right?
It's generally, that's what you could call it, yes.
And it's and it's roughly auditable. I mean, roughly gap compliant, correct?
It provides the information that you need.
So and to, I understand in the accounting world, that is kind of a fungible term. It also is a meaningful one. Are you able to print out a gap, a roughly gap compliant P and L at any given time?
Um. I don't, I don't know if it's gap compliant.
So you software that, I mean, I i- is it QuickBooks or Peachtree? You know, QuickBooks is roughly gap, Peachtree's fully gap. I mean, I'm just wondering.
We might use Excel. I'm not sure.
May I help?
Sure.
Yeah.
The accounting software that's used for accounting for all expenditures and revenues associated with operations in the city. Um this is a governmental type fund.
Yeah.
And so a P and L as as you're talking about, for for a for profit business would not be. Uh produced by the software for this function. It could be and and being gap, meaning th- that it would be reported outside the organization.
And and I'm being a bit fungible on that.
Or anything like that.
Yeah, yeah.
But we could, we could show you revenue minus expenditures.
Yeah.
Down to what would be called a net income, if you will.
On every journal item.
For.
Um.
On a monthly period.
Okay.
And and then you could see the detail, but then you have to look at each line item. Uh detail accounting.
Yeah, so what I'm getting at is journal items. I'm not getting at, I mean, beyond journal item style detail.
Well, here's the thing with that. So we have um, we have a like credit card processing currently. They're not accepting any cash there. I know that from from going there since they've reopened since covid, so they. They're not accepting cash, so it's goes through a software, um you know, or credit card processing rather. And then. Um. We have to journal entry in those um payments, you know, showing that those were received, so. And I apologize because I didn't understand what you were asking. Our software is called ADG, American Data Group. That we use for our entire um. For our our entire entire um. You know, all of our funds and the general ledger and everything and all of the accounts. Um and so then. You know, those have to be entered. Um it doesn't, and I don't believe it. I mean, they have a breakdown, yes, at WAC, but I don't hear have a breakdown necessarily of, okay, so that that day's. Total for their credit card processing was, you know, a thousand dollars. Is it, you know, how many daily?
Let me.
Passage for you.
Interrupt for a second, Emily. I'm not looking for specific line items and all the. All the, all, every journal entry I'm talking about, you know, you have a chart of accounts.
Mm hmm.
P and L.
The answer is yes.
No, no P and L, but it but it it is what Kelly has alluded to, and I'll tell you.
So therefore, what I would request. Is for eighteen nineteen and year to date. A P and L listing out chart of accounts. Items.
Yeah.
Then I would like to see, and and I know we've gotten them in various places, but then put together uh the actual activity annualized, not.
Here.
And and then we can figure out. What the cost per swimmer is, all this stuff. I mean, we can figure this out.
I I don't mean to, I don't mean to interrupt. I apologize for doing that, but um i- if you look on page thirty one.
I see.
Twenty eighteen actuals, twenty nineteen actuals.
I get it, but this isn't, that's not precisely what I'm looking, that's not a P and L. It does, it is kind of a chart of accounts layout, I get.
We don't do a P and L.
Out of an governmental accounting software for governmental type act.
And my concern is Robert's questions were really not P and L based. I mean.
Data.
Yeah.
Informational on the breakdown of who's using the pool, more so the P and L type.
Uh P and L could help figure out a lot of what he's asking.
Absolutely.
And that's what I'm trying to get. I'm trying to simplify this process because um. If if we if we print out the P and L from the software, then I know we're working off the real numbers and not transpose numbers into.
But. The this is real numbers. I mean, the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, those are.
Not my point. Just saying it would be quite simplified, easier to digest. And then if we can, we can go and do our own calculations after we look at the actual activity, numbers of people buying. App, number of people buying yearly, annual, day, whatever, so.
Yes.
Yeah, so Rusty, just to clarify, where.
Happy to help with that if I can, Darren and Emily.
Um, yes, I I I I apologize. I'm just a little bit confused because. Um. And I'm sure Kelly, you know, in the in the audit, you know, there's all that information and then it's reflected here.
I understand.
Um, as far as, you know, broken down daily use fees, punch and pass cards, totals and. Um.
Won't be to today because.
Yeah, I understand that.
The period, so.
Just some year of date, year to date closing.
Year to date as far as what's closed.
But I think comparing with previous years, it would be helpful. So I just think, huh? Oh, no, I'm I'm not trying to compare this year. That's why I'm asking for eighteen to nineteen.
Yeah.
So um I just think it would be useful and helpful. And and I think based upon this year, we're not going to be able to project well into next year because I think we've got some rollover effect as well, too. I just don't think a lot of people really understand what the dynamic is with this. And for those who are more radical on on dealing with it and those who are like, hey, this is what we do. I don't think anybody understands what's going on. And so I I see this and and I know you put a lot of effort into. This Excel spreadsheet. I know you can just pretty much run the report or roughly. So on the rest, and I like to see things in a P and L form, which is what I'm used to looking at. So I I just think, I think it's helpful. And I think if we do it year by year and just take a look at this and then. We get a better understanding of where we've been and where we can go. This year will tell us nothing. I totally agree. I don't even think next year will tell us anything.
Yeah, twenty nineteen probably is the best baseline we've got. All right, I think we have um. So Mayor Suzanne, Mayor Pro Tem La Barre is leaving at about nine twenty five.
Thank you, Mayor.
Emily Business. Thank you.
So just to finish the circle with you, Rusty, on that.
Yeah.
How far are we going tonight, Mr. Mayor?
Sorry?
How far are we going this evening?
That was my next thing.
So my questions were to help us get the data drilled down. And from what I see, we don't have it drilled down enough. And so by finding out how many are local, how many are path? People who are coming repetitively, we're getting an idea of what sort of volume are we actually catering to in terms of our citizenry? But also, how how about people who are coming from out of town? Aquatic Center was billed as being a tourist attraction, so how much of that revenue is actually from that? When we see what those depths are, we can look at going, oh, we're not getting very many out of this town, or we're getting a lot of out of town and we're not getting many in town. So by getting the different pieces of information, it'll help us look at how we can improve performance.
I I I agree.
And then the type.
They don't ask for, they don't.
Let them finish.
Yeah, please. Conversation with Robert for a moment. I I get it and um but yours is more upper, a a different type of breakout of the numbers than the P and L.
Exactly.
P and L is great, let's get that.
Yeah.
If if the pool has the data. That uh answers your question, I would ask them to produce that. If they don't have the data, I guess my comment about information costs money. If they haven't been tracking certain things, I would hope they would just come back to you and say. We did not collect or have not collected this breakout. We can going forward, something like that.
And my wife, if we get this information I'm asking for, we're going to be so far down the road.
Yeah, yeah.
Correct. Knowing exactly where we're at, that these extra, this extra information is useful. But I, you know, I just, I want to get started at baseline.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Well, the 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 information is available except for the out of town or information that does, that is not collected. I'll just give you that as a heads up right now. Uh we don't charge a different price for for out of towners than we do in towners, so we'd have to change maybe the fee structure or we'd have to actually start asking those questions of people who come into. Into City Hall. Uh if we had more information, we could potentially get some market data that could provide that, but that could that would cost money in terms of. Um, you know, trade areas and so forth, that people are spending money at that facility based on credit card information. Um but.
Gone down that rabbit hole with differentiating fees for recreation programs several times over the years. Um with regards to county versus city. Uh participation in recreation programs. And I can tell you that we explored that thoroughly. Cindy will remember that she was involved. And um it didn't go anywhere and it was very poorly received. Um and and I think we have to always remember that we are a part of this county. Um and that there are lots of things that are shared services and IGAs and things like that that we do with each other. In order to facilitate efficiencies, like snow plowing and different things like that, because we have a lot of unincorporated. Areas in our community that we take care of in exchange for them taking care of things uh that are inconvenient for us. We've been down there.
Oh, great.
Can't hear anybody. Are you guys the same?
Um I can't, I think froze, City Hall froze.
Okay, yeah, we can't hear anything. Let me text Rob. Yes.
We just got. They're muted.
The city attorney reminds me always, we we try to differentiate on different services provided. That's one of the failures that. Uh we have when we when we start to discriminate different ways.
Well, from an economics perspective, doing separate fees anyway, in in this kind of close geographical proximity. Just as from a business perspective is not even useful because you're trying to draw as many people as possible, not as few.
Just a point of order, Mayor. I I think we've stopped transmitting. I mean, we're getting it up here, but online, can you check to see?
It's fixed, Rusty. It's fixed now. Well, it stopped for a short few, a few minutes or about a minute.
So anyway, I think, you know, I it it's useful from a marketing perspective and see what the effect of it is, but and it is something I think we'd have interest in. But to die on that hill, I don't think is useful right now.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna, we're gonna move on. Uh we are. We are going to go to page thirty eight with the council's consent and if, because we're, we're coming up on four hours, which is our meeting maximum here. If.
We still have executive sessions?
Pardon?
Do we still?
Yes, we still have executive sessions. So we're kind of.
Quit now?
So we could quit now.
Very early meeting tomorrow.
Let me, let me put it this way. We're, we're in Culture and Recreation Fund. We've kind of beat the, we've, we've done quite a bit on thirty one, thirty two, thirty three. Yeah, we'll do that. I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask council to, thank you for reminding me about the executive sessions. If nobody has anything up through page thirty four, or if you do, please speak now.
Do not.
Can I just add in my one clarification that I, that's the only thing I was gonna do earlier? I wasn't trying to interrupt you guys is that they don't ask at the Woodland Aquatic Center your zip code, like, is that's what the thought was? They don't do that.
Yeah, that's clear to us. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. I I don't see any more comments on Culture and Recreation Fund. We're gonna stop at this point and continue on at a later meeting and we'll move on to public comment. And I'm going to read a statement that have created. Public comment is intended for the community to provide feedback to the city council. In an effort to facilitate a productive meeting, we urge everyone to strive to be respectful of one another. Public comment is not intended to be a platform for argument or abrasive conduct. City council and staff will take note of your concerns and comments and will work towards providing a response at a later time as appropriate. We ask that you state your name and municipality of residence before you begin your comments. Comments will be limited to five minutes and we appreciate your assistance in creating an atmosphere of civility as we all work together for the betterment of our community. I have one speaker who's interested in speaking, Mr. Carlson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Not that it, it matters much what my opinion is, but I was delighted with what I saw tonight. The consensus that was brought by everyone.
Microphone.
Anyway, I'm Bob Carlson, eleven fifty five, Windflower Lane, Woodland Park, Colorado. And a brief comment with regard to the Aquatic Center, because I've been personally invested in this since forever. My experience this summer with going there was one, it was very difficult to get an appointment there. But when I got, got in there, the capacity under COVID was fifty people per, per session at maximum capacity. And for that, they had four people operating for fifty, for fifty people. When I got there, there were thirty five people in there, including lifeguards, which meant there was room for other people. But they turned people away because they weren't taking walk-ins. And so I was concerned, why weren't they operating like a restaurant who has a capacity and some people can reserve, make reservations, others can just walk in. Okay? And and so that was what my concern. And why is it so few hours that you can just walk, walk in and use the pool? It was like four hours a week out of a forty hour a week. So they, these are the kind of questions that went through my mind. And especially if we're going to project forward. Very few ti- hours, do you ever have fifty people, maybe on a Saturday afternoon? But so this is the kind of questions that we need to be asking as council. And so I'm glad, very glad that you're look, you're looking into that and you're asking those questions. Anyway, my statement is I recognize that this is a draft budget with major changes for sales tax and property tax revenues due shortly, not to mention the Gallagher Amendment may, which may be rescinded in on the third of November, which will have an impact, too. I, I will take this opportunity to present two other major issues that will also affect the proposed twenty twenty one city budget. Firstly, the twenty one, twenty one, twenty twenty one budget should be reviewed and approved within the framework of a ten year financial and capital investment plan. The need for such plans was identified in a twenty ten comprehensive pa- plan that has only been developed once in twenty fourteen to show that the city council that there were sufficient funds over a twenty year period to pay for these bonds, the business bond, bond that paid. Okay, in the twenty nineteen city budget approved in December eighteen, council established the top priority, the completion of these plans in twenty nineteen. However, the city manager failed to produce the plans, but promised that they would be produced in twenty twenty. In the schedule for the twenty twenty one city budget, city manager has suspended action quote until further guidance provided by city council. Such plans are developed by other cities as best business practice. I will be forwarding a cap, financial and capital investment plan spreadsheet to council shortly as kind of an example of what could be done. And I'm sure previous versions of this have been passed around to council before. I, I'm constantly updating it as data comes in. I recommend the city council provide such guidance which would include establishing a baseline year like twenty twenty one. And with, for which subsequent years would take that baseline and only add tw- two percent per year for both revenues and expenses, with the exception of sales tax revenues, which would also include one point nine percent for growth. This is all what the councils have done in the past. In order to pre- reserve sufficient funds to pay for the principal due for the aquatic and memorial park renovation at the end of twenty twenty five, which if you take all the principal that would be due at in twenty six and beyond, amounts to seven point seven more million dollars. Major funding sources need to be identified. Hundred thousand dollars a year will not do it. Okay? My recommendation is to charge all street operations and thirty eight percent of fleet operations to the street capital improvement account. This account has been used since nineteen or two thousand and six to pay for the O and M for street improvements, salaries for streets crew, vehicles for the street crew, and thirty eight percent of the maintenance facility. We spent five hundred thousand, over five hundred thousand dollars out of the four ten account, should they pay for that fleet maintenance facility. So all this is, has precedent. This account has been, okay. So instead of transferring one hundred and forty seven, nine hundred and fifty from the street fund to the general fund, an additional four hundred and eighty thousand dollars can be transferred in twenty twenty with over seven hundred thousand dollars transferred in each year in the future years. By the end of twenty twenty five, some nine point nine million dollars would be available in the general fund to pay that seven point seven debt. This nine million also allows for accumulation of sufficient reserves so long as the entire balance between revenues and expenditures goes to the reserve. In other words, if whatever the delta is between revenues, expenses goes to the reserve. I think that's already been discussed.
Please wrap it up.
This level of reserves also provides sufficient funds to immediately maintain current levels of service, pay a one percent, one point three zero cost of living allowance to, to our employees. Reduce property taxes from sixteen mil to fourteen mil. Okay. Well. If you want, I can put the red, this in the record. If, but it's only going to take another minute.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Reduce properties taxes, like I said, reimburse vendors for other efforts on behalf of the city in collecting taxes if council, so does ours, and reduce the business tax to thirty five percent a year, not just over a couple of years. Just get it done with. Without the financial and capital investment plans, the council is operating in the blind as to what the true financial situation is in the future. And it's very good, as I pointed out. Secondly, the question arises whether the street capital improvement plan can for this transfer to the general fund. The one percent sales tax dedicated this, the four ten account is about two point two million dollars a year going up. The payment management plan states that an annual investment in the amount of one million per year for O and M and recapitalization of curate streets would be sufficient to main street, tame streets in good condition. Of the one million, the, the street operation budget consumes about five hundred fifty thousand per year for, for street operations and leaving four hundred and fifty thousand dollars for recapitalization. Another two hundred thousand would go to other street related works like sidewalks, et cetera. Leaving two million for funding vehicle operations and street improvements. This account can certainly afford to transfer funds to the general fund.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask you to send that to us if you wouldn't mind. Because we're, we're over. I, I realize you used a minute and you have to comment about the WAC. But I appreciate your input and please send us that to, through Suzanne.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Thank you. All right. Yes, thank you very much, especially on that hard metal chair.
Anyway, I, I really appreciate all the discussion.
Thanks. I need a motion to go into executive session.
All right.
I have it. I'd like to make.
Rusty always gets to do the motion. Sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead, Joe.
No, no, I'm kidding. I'm joking.
I'll take the second one.
I will second you. Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to move into executive session for discussion of a personal matter under CRS section twenty four dash six dash four oh two sub force of F and not involving any specific employees who have requested discussion of the matter in open session. Any member of this body or any elected official, the appointment of any person to fill an office of this body or of an elected official or personnel policies that do not require the discussion of matters personal to particular employees. And the following additional details are provided for identification purposes. Evaluation with the city attorney.
I second the motion.
Thank you, Suzanne.
Thank you. Case?
Yes.
Neil? Councilmember Neil?
Yes.
Path?
Yes.
Zulawaga?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you very much. We will adjourn upstairs, I believe. Thank you.